That was our signal. Being okay, so all right, come to order. Roll call. Getting absent here.
Kornick.
David?
Yes.
Lee is present. We have four out of five. That's a quorum and we will proceed. First item of business is approval of the agenda. Are there amendments to offer either in content or sequence? Seeing none, their motion to approve. Chairman, I move to approve that minutes. I see the agenda.
My second.
Question, favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, both safe sign. Mr. Cherry's. Next item of business, approval of minutes from November 13 regular meeting. Looked like their usual good job to be. Are there comments or corrections on those minutes?
I found one spelling mistake on page two. The third. From the bottom. Talking about that FAA. The. That one is FFA. FTA. The second section is correct, says FAA.
Sure it's not that feature farmer's.
Yeah, all right. Like the FAA.
Federal aviation.
All right, other corrections. We'll have these things polished up for publication. If seeing none, motion to approve the minutes as amended. I move to approve the minutes.
My second.
Further discussion, all favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, most same sign. Cherry's. Disclosures, conflicts of interest, Mr. Platt.
I.
Mr. Kornick. It's been David.
John.
So jump into applications. We have one and so we'll have a appropriate public hearing on that. The procedure for those who may be listening in is report to staff. We typically invite the applicant to come forward to. Give us their two bits worth of answer questions. I don't see them in the room or online, but we'll get to that. If there's any public who wants to step up, they need to state their name and address. Give you three minutes, more or less, please stay on topic and note that there will be an opportunity for general comments. While doing this, letting us go yet at the end meeting. So the first item is the Prairie Sun. District zoning district amendment. We have a staff report on that. We could have started.
Yes. All right, the applicant is Jerry Dotson. And this is located. Pretty much straight across from the airport entrance. The request is to change zoning of 10 acres from agricultural to rural residential. And take and as well as 10 acres from agricultural to commercial. There were some reviews. Assessor's office had no concerns, road and bridge had no concerns, treasurer's office had no concerns, fire district had no concerns. Laramie River Conservation District had no concerns, YDOT had no concerns, Gambit Fish had no comments. And City of Laramie. They talked about the Laramie area growth plan and would like to see more density. Then rural residential and therefore how it's going to be seen in the review section. The applicable sections of the Albany County zoning resolution are chapter three, section five findings necessary for approval. Pursuant to the Albany County zoning resolution, chapter three, section five G. The Board of County Commissioners must make the following findings. The applicant has provided such maps or surveys as required. The proposed zoning district amendment generally follows suggestions of the Albany County Comprehensive Plan. Including but not limited to the long range growth plan and the priority growth areas and other applicable land use plans. And the applicant has demonstrated that the proposed zoning district amendment complies with the following criteria. And pursuant to chapter three, section five D of the Albany County zoning resolution. The applicant has provided the required notice by posted side publication and certified mailing. So the comprehensive plan. This is located in priority birth area one. Which is an area where city services may be able to be extended efficiently. It's the area where the city is planning future extensions of road, water sewer and other public services financed through future development. And the intent is for properties in priority growth area one to develop city density standards and annex or eventually annex to the city of Laramie. I included some definitions of the zoning classes that. These would fit into. The growth plan. Calls for estate residential, multifamily residential and community commercial in this area. And then the major street plan calls for a. Collector Road on the east side of this parcel or this proposed zoning district amendment. And if a potential subdivision were to come forward, road rider, road right of way at the very least would need to be reserved. Staff analysis, the applicant has addressed the potential impacts the zoning district amendment may cause and has provided a complete application. The planning department believes that this proposed zoning district amendment generally follows the suggestions of the Albany County. Cover is a plan and Laramie area growth plan. The planning department's concern is that the proposed commercial zoning is not at a current intersection and would still not be with the current proposed subdivision. The major street plan calls for a road to be placed at the east end of this parcel. And which would place an intersection at the proposed commercially zone parcel. Findings of fact, the findings is served for approval and applicant responses referenced in this report. Are adopted as findings reflecting that the applicant has adequately addressed the specified impacts. And the same are incorporated herein, inclusive of law. The applicant is proceeding in accordance with and is in compliance with the requirements of the Albany County zoning resolution. Staff recommendation is to approve the Prairie Sun zoning district amendment application CDA. Oh, four, two, three, adopting and incorporating the staff analysis. Findings of fact and conclusive law as each are stated in this staff report.
Okay, thank you. This is kind of the. First run at the area growth plan. We all already appreciated that. Expect that to generate some discussion. That was the substance of the city's comments, of course. So before we dive too far into that, are there any initial questions on the staff recorded in that application as it came to us? Let's do a little round robin on that, Mr. Platt. You want to?
Yes.
Mr. Wells.
Joe, thank you for updating this application to include the site plan, the engineering site plan. As well as the staff. Appreciate that. I note that still there are references in the first section to three houses and three dwelling spaces. And I will suggest that before I go as the county commissioners, that that should be changed, reflect.
Um, I mean, there still could be three houses, but I. One on each lot. Commercial, you can still put a house on it.
Okay, well, then. You can take my commentary advice. Noting that there is. A change. To property ownership, I think, maybe since this was originally started two years ago, I'm wondering if all the contiguous property owners are in fact contact or not.
What property change are you?
Well, to the south. Believe on the application. The first contiguous property owners listed acquiring central land improvement company. And the profit used while they're now belongs to this is Robin Kim.
Yeah, so it's the same property owner. It was just under a. So if you looked at the Wyoming central land, the contact was, it's always been who the current owner is.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um. Is it correct that you and David and Philip met today and talked about this?
But we did not meet with Philip today. I didn't meet with Philip today.
I spoke with him on the phone. You did. And is there anything that came out of that that you'd like to tell us about? There wasn't anything that. Any additional information that I received from that, but. Wasn't. Not really. Well, then in that case.
They asked me questions.
Yeah, to both of you in that case. As Burr noted, this is our first contact with Larry area growth plan. We spent a lot of time and effort, not just everyone, to develop this plan. And now the city has raised this very first effort, a substantial objection. Which seems clear enough. You know, the that property, the area that we're looking at is owned, state residential. Not rural residential. And I'm just wondering, you don't, you don't mean zone, you mean it's planned in the growth.
Yeah, yes, yes, correct, correct.
Yeah, so. You're going ahead and recommending this rural residential. Zoning request be approved in spite of that.
Yes.
So I'm wondering what the justification or what the reasoning is there.
Yeah, so I guess let's start. So commercial, that pretty well lines up with where the commercials are. Or the commercial land use is on the map and then multifamily also would. That's where our multifamily is, would be commercial as well. Estate residential and the growth plan, it calls. It calls for three dwelling units per acre, which is significantly more dense than rural residential. However, I believe that rural residential is the closest thing to that that we have right now. Because we don't have a zoning for that. Because we have no standards that have been adopted from the growth plan. So we're kind of in this little in between area, I guess. And at the end of the day, it's up to you guys and the board of county commissioners to make that decision, so. It's just in my opinion that the. This is the, as close as you could get. To what it's calling for.
Could I follow up on that?
Sure.
Since you bring it up, let's just follow that thread for a minute. What about our, our urban residential or small lot? What's our tightest zoning is a rural residential, right?
Right, but that would be a water or sewer district.
And do we know whether this applicant has pursued any of those? My discussion.
Not to mine.
Annexation. And we do it. Oh, I see their engineers with this. All right, Jared, we may get to you in a minute here. That was the question I had in that context. What are our options here? Okay, sorry, just so we're clear on the, they couldn't ask for, for the smaller lot.
Well, I realize that we don't have a specific designation. In our zoning resolution right now for this size density or this type of density. But the alternative is to recommend denial rather than recommend approval.
Yeah, so I'm wondering why you chose to recommend approval rather than denial in that case.
I guess I went with my gut on this. Nothing really. I mean, in my opinion, I'm more concerned with the potential commercial zoning than I am the rural residential. But that's my opinion.
That's all I have. Thank you.
My question is. Do we need to worry about the learning growth plan? Before the city has made any moves to annex the area or change the designation?
I guess that's up to you guys. To my knowledge, there hasn't been any annexation discussion that's taken place at all. I'm not really sure that they even could. Being that there's a highway in between the city, I don't know how that would work. I could be wrong on that.
Well, not just a highway, but also a strip of private property.
Correct, yeah.
Yep.
So it's not, you know, they don't touch. So.
So we literally can't deny a request based on the current boundaries of the county. Just because of a growth.
I mean, if you can, if you can point to something, I think you can deny it, you know, as long as you can refer to something.
Yeah, but can we deny it based on a futuristic plan that may or may not happen?
Well, I mean, the plan has been approved.
Plan is adopted.
The plan was adopted, but it.
We don't have regs based off of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
It's, it's not in a state where. You know, it's, it's the law of the land, so.
Well, let's, let's just clarify what we have in terms of plans. So we have a variety of things that count as land use plans. And that's the comprehensive plan, the casual protection plan, correct, growth area management plan. And it is, was that?
Major street plan.
Area street plan. And when zoning decisions are brought before us, those exactly are the documents to which we turn for justification for our decisions. There's no, nothing else that happens there. Again, this is a zoning request, not a subdivision request. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Correct.
And so, yes, the reference documents here are the established plans, which includes the.
So again, the question. If it was a subdivision request. Would we deny? Do we have any basis to do that?
I love to be in agricultural zones, so we have to have the zone changed first. That's, that's why we are at the zoning change is the first step towards them. Were they zone rich rural residential and came forward with a subdivision that met the criteria for the zone? Again, correct me if I'm wrong, gentlemen, then it would be quite difficult to deny. Fair?
As long as you could point to something.
But, but that's the point of the zoning. Once we have said, this is zone rural residential. And rural residential envisions five acre minimum lot sizes. Somebody comes with five acre minimum lots, those is your, a very little. Criteria that we should be thinking about. But that's why zoning decisions are, are the criticals. In my opinion.
So.
Please.
So if we have. We're going to stick to the Laramie area growth plan, they have to go with the state residential, but we don't have any rules to go with that. So if they want to do something here, they, they don't have any alternatives until we come up with our exit system.
Well, that's a future land use and land use and zoning is different. We don't have a state residential zone. But. I mean, I guess they could, they could ask for small lot if you wanted more debts.
That would prevent them from just putting two houses there, but they'd have to do more with water and sewer, I guess.
Well, small lot would, would be able to have two acre lots.
But they don't want two acres.
They're not asking for that. They're asking for.
Want to be able to do wells and septic. So I mean, there'd be nothing to prevent them in the future from further subdividing if they went rural residential now.
Yes, if, if I may, I had a discussion with the city planning in this, that we are definitely in this sort of an in between. The concept, again, I welcome correction from you, you professional platters, but the concept of the growth plan was one did not want to have the city of Laramie. Surrounded by 10 acre lots subdivisions. Because then where does the city go and the houses have all been placed? And the roads are all in and you're landlocked basically. So it creates this odd situation where you would almost have to zone with a maximum lot size. In order to accomplish what the growth area management plan suggests. That would be a bold step in a new direction. Or. Require annexation. I mean, I think that's where the basic growth plan goes is that these areas that are, and there's a memorandum of, what a. Store it up looking for the understanding, like. IG, IG, intergovernmental agreement that will codify all this and it is anticipated. That that might do something like say, if somebody comes to plan to city, county with a plot. Abutting the city, our answer would be annex. And then it would be the city's problem to be off course. This one again, to kind of. This nebulous zone because they aren't, they don't actually abut and probably wouldn't. It's that old right away for the railroad is a ten year list in between. Strip is, so anyway, we're kind of in between. What would, what would your reaction be, I'm speaking to staff, for us to deny the application pending resolution of the growth area management? Is that? That, that seems a little thin. How does that, well, Mr. Harris, we were shaking his head. Chime in here.
Well, Mr. Chair. Mr. Kornick, I mean, I think that your line of thought was right on point. I, I think it would be inherently capricious if they were to be denied because, you know, it says, well, this plan says that this is to be the density. And that we don't even provide that density as an option that they can achieve. Yeah. But. I mean, I suppose. You know, it, it could be that generally this, this request is not. In accordance with the suggestions of the Laramie growth plan because, well, you can go smaller. You can go a small lot residential, which at least gets you closer to the goal, I think that. You know, obviously when they're, because what is the density for state residential in the growth area plan? Three dwellings per acre, which is a lot. We don't have anything close to that. But, you know, obviously one dwelling for five acres is far away from that. So the closest that they could reasonably get is the one dwelling for two acres. Which is small lot residential. But also, you know, no, I don't think that you cannot. Without a moratorium first being in place, you cannot. Deny something based upon, on future. Plan to action in regards to a resolution.
Yeah, so a moratorium would probably be the, the way, if, if you had some. Set of regulations that you're working on under the gun and that really had needed to wait till those were done, then you'd do a moratorium.
Correct.
Use of that, okay, understood. Now. Urban residential. Is that the term we have that?
Yes.
It isn't. We could zone an urban residential, could we not? Were, were they to ask us?
Yeah. They are not the request.
I understand that's not the request.
Yes, Mr. Chair, in order to do that, they do need either water or sewer availability. So that would be the condition, they have to have either centralized water or sewer available to the property to change it to a residential.
I, I don't believe that's true.
That's, that's kind of probing here. We don't have a criteria for so. Before they could develop a subdivision, maybe they'd have to, but yeah, walk us through that a little more carefully.
Let me, let me, let me find it. Okay, so. This is what it says, urban residential zone is primarily for single family uses on individual lots with centralized water and or sewer. Systems typically within water and sewer districts or in areas that are connected to city water. And or sewer. The use of centralized water and sewer is a requirement for subdivisions in this zone. So we, we would recommend denial of a request for urban residential unless they have water or sewer based on those.
What's that? We, one could, those are primarily and typically are not shells. So the point at which those rules would come into, to requirements would be at subdivision stage sector, because where I was reading that.
Yeah, I mean, I guess that, yeah. I mean, I guess we could change it, but why would you change it if they didn't have water or sewer? That doesn't make sense.
I'm just exploring the possibility.
Sure.
The issue for us right now is the zoning thing and that we got.
Well, there too, because you could anticipate that happening in the future. What's that? You can anticipate that happening in the future. Water and sewer. Yeah, taken care of. Eventually it could happen that there's. They wanted to do a subdivision, that's where it is requirement, I guess that's what I said.
Okay, and then maybe we'll get the applicant to weigh in here. Okay, so I, I would go back to now, let's set Laramie growth plan aside for a moment. I had some issues with the application. Apart from that. And apparently this has gone on for some time. So. I was concerned when I read about this, the second reviews, what, what exactly did these reviewers review? Was it a packet that we saw early last week? Was it some previous application? I'm just trying to close the loops here on who actually saw what and so to what were they comment?
Sure, so this has actually been submitted three times to us over the last couple of years. And withdrawn or pulled or whatever it may be. And so every time we got a new one, we sent it out to everyone. And so these comments, like you'll see that they're, they have different dates on them or whatever, like. If they replied the first time, but not the second or third, then I still, I, I just included all the comments that we've gotten over the course. All three times.
But all of these agencies. Did have three times. To comment on all three times.
Yes, correct.
Okay. And one reason I ask is, as I read. Your, the findings, which are, are mirror the, the applicant's responses to the required findings. That, that, there's very little discussion of the commercial. And when you actually read the, the responses from the commenters, several of them specifically say. We have no comments on this residential proposal. So my concern is that I don't, I don't think the application is, is well crafted and arguably is incomplete. In the absence of any discussion of the commercial aspect of the zoning. So it sounds to me like a credible application for a residential zone change, but there's, there's virtually nothing in here. Commercial, I think, is mentioned once in the whole thing, so.
And I, I don't remember. If, if my memory serves me correctly, Jared might know better, but I don't think commercial was always a proposed zone. I think the original one we got, they were all residential lots, rural residential lots. I could be wrong. Jared, go ahead.
That, that's actually correct. This has gone through several different iterations. With the commercial lot being the most recent addition. Besides the, the other sticking point, which was the access off of the highway, which we've now got a YDOT access permit for. The current proposed iteration and then to, I mean, to, I, I hope this further addresses your concerns. I would come, the subdivision application would come in after this and then now all the agencies would get another chance to see the commercial lot. And the layout and review and comment. Based on this new application. So there, there will be another chance for all these agencies to review and comment based, based on this commercial lot. That, that will come.
Okay, I guess my concern, that, that does little to allay my concern, but it does support the notion that what we have here is a kind of a collaboration of things. And then most recently, we have another correction that we saw Friday. Where there's a new map.
I just added that map.
Well, there, when I just looked at the application that's dated January 22, it's different.
Yeah, it's just an update of the, I guess, so the first one, you're talking about the cover page.
Well, the cover has got a different map on it.
Yeah.
The text has changed slightly of the.
Correct.
I have problems with things being corrected and maintaining their original date. It isn't the same document. Okay, so I, I guess I see what happened here, but it strikes me that this whole thing is, could stand a, stand back, run through the whole thing. Each of those findings and address them with respect to both of the requests, which are residential and commercial. So when we're talking about traffic impacts or any of the, of the individual findings, the analysis seems to be based on some previous. Application, I, I find it to be.
The rural residential and commercial zoning, what is in front of you has been sent out to everyone. Right. Whether they commented on it or not. If they've seen it.
No, but the analysis that impacts to public services, road network, cultural resources, those are all wrapped around a request for a residential zoning change.
Part of it is residential.
Part of it is, and I, okay, there's another question I was going to ask you, gentlemen. Would it be appropriate to approve this as a. Zoning change to rural residential? I don't see it as a complete application for a zoning change to commercial, because there's so little discussion, basically none of the. Commercial change and what its impacts might be, and I'm concerned that the reviewers did not review it as a change to commercial zoning. The thought that that will have another bite. The thought that that will have another bite at that apple when we come to the subdivision. Addresses the comments I made earlier to, to my fellow commissioners. This is the bite that counts. So again, what, what, what's, what's your reaction to my suggestion that this? An application ought to be redone with the right dates applied to the right maps. And let's just get the whole thing back on one page and, uh, do it right instead of try to read between the lines, understanding what they really meant.
So I, I would disagree that it's an incomplete application. They provided us information as they saw fit. Um, for this application. Um, you may not agree with what was provided and you don't. May not feel like it was provided in the correct manner to address what you're looking at, like the commercials. But I, I wouldn't say was incomplete. I guess I'm just. To me, a complete application is, is they, they provide the application with information to address the issues in the application. They provide the fee. That's what we look for in a complete, complete application. So, I mean, if you feel like it's not, those items have not been addressed sufficiently. That's a different story and that's, that's something we can deal with and, and I'm okay with that.
Okay, well then, you know, you know, I'm, I'm happy to have my terminology changed by what I'm hearing you say is if, if they have some. Verbage under each of those headings, that constitutes a complete application.
If you have something to point to, you know, that you want to deny it on, like, I would, I would say, point to it and send it back or. Don't, I, I, it's up to you.
Okay, no, I understand this is, the decision is before us, um, and I, again, I don't have the proper terminology to say. Incomplete may not be correct, right? Inadequate, uh. Whatever words that you want. The proposed subdivision expects to consist of three houses, semi-pervious driveway. Response to one of the required findings. Okay, that's nice. What about the commercial piece? Sure, there's no discussion of that, so my argument would be that they have.
If I may, that sounds like a drainage, uh, issue that's usually addressed during the subdivision application. Which that would be updated at that time.
I am simply looking at the findings as they are presented to us and you are required through your application to address. The impact of the zoning change on these various features, Mr. Kornik, please.
It seems like if they weren't asking for that to be zoned commercial, we'd have to be talking about how it doesn't fit with the Laramie area growth plan. So that's, is commercial in the growth plan, right?
It is commercial. However, if you wanted to not deny based on the commercial zoning, I think you could point to, uh, the comp plan. And talk about how the comp plan refers to commercial being at a major intersection. There's no intersection there. There's no proposed intersection there.
But there will be.
Maybe.
Oh, I thought.
If we get that far.
I thought, um, Jared just said that was resolved.
That is not resolved. The major street plan calls for an intersection there. Uh, if you look at the survey that was provided, that was added in this past week. You can see where the proposed, uh, access is. And that is on the very western side of the. Um, railroad right of way.
So maybe it can't be developed as commercial until that road is there, but the growth plan says it's commercial.
No, commercial land use calls for commercial. It's not, it's zoned agricultural right now. They're asking.
I know, but in the growth plan, it recommends that be commercial.
It does, it does, but the comp plan also calls for it to be at a, an intersection and it's not.
Right, so. Is it possible to do the zoning change, but you can't actually develop it to be at the intersection?
Okay, well, those, I don't know, express my dissatisfaction with the. Applicants, with the application, um, and much of it goes to just. There's too many loose ends and kind of implications. And the dates that don't match. It just seems to me if we're going to move forward with this thing, I'd like to see it be a much cleaner ask. Um, but it is what it is and we could go accordingly. Are there other questions for staff before we move into giving Mr. Ralph an opportunity to start?
I've, I've got one more that may qualify as one of your loose ends. It seems like the number of wells is not consistent in different places in the application. On, um, page sixteen of what, the last thing that Joe sent us, I, the way I read that is, uh. That the houses are going to share one well. Here is that. A water well, which will be drilled for both the new homes. Does that mean? One well for both that they're going to share or they each have one?
I mean, I guess I read it like, I, I read it as if every individual home would have their own, but.
There are a couple of different places where I could read it. I'm just to clarify that.
As, yeah, that was just clumsily worded. Each, each house, each individual house will have an individual well. I don't think you can actually share a well. So, um, that's how it was intended. Um, each house will be developed to have its own independent well and septic.
Okay, and this is a commercial lot would also have a well except.
I believe so, uh, unless there's, um, water and sewer available.
Sounds like we're moving into questions, questions for the applicant, but please go ahead, let's.
Okay, well, I, I was reading it more like. So that, um, well then, on the density question, somebody mentioned you could do two lots, two acre lots would be the closest we could get right now. What, what designation is that? Is that still rural residential?
Small lot residential.
Small lot residential. So is that something we could require as a compromise since we don't actually have what?
Any requirement?
We can't change what the, what's in the application right now. Um, if we wanted to, like, I mean, I guess as Boynberg pointed out, you could request they do urban residential. That would require them to get.
But I guess the other part of that question was if they did do two acre lots, could they do the well and septic since they don't have. You know, centralized water and sewer there. I mean, you could still just, you could still just build your, um, six acres instead of five, right? If you had. If you wanted that big of a lot, you would just buy three of them, put your one house on there if you wanted to, right? But they would make, it would put, make it so that it complies with the growth plan. Closer, as close as we can get.
Yeah, no, and I mean, yeah, you can't, can't change their, their request. Um, but you can always, it's, it's always a good idea if, um, you know, to. If denying something to indicate the deficiency and what, what would cause it. Um, to be approved.
That's, that's fair. Other comments for Mr. Ralph? Questions? Uh, I guess I had a couple that, that we hinted at here. What's? If you know, what's your applicant's posture with respect to the growth area management plan? Has the city been approached? Is there any interest in annexing? Have you looked at bringing sewer and water in? Are those?
Um, yeah, there have been talking to the city about, um, dedicating some land to, um, a future. Uh, water expansion, but that's mostly just setting property aside. It's kind of a vague date out in the future. Um, the developer wants to start developing their land now and so, you know, waiting for the city is. Um, an oper, what they see is a future opportunity, let's say. They can get houses out there and then, then they can run, um, uh, a, a city water and annex them or work to annex them. Um. Uh, but yeah, the city has been approached and this is generally, uh. Something they've discussed, yeah. Um, it's, and including this, this, uh, density and layout, the city hasn't really balked at that. It was just more. Well, hey, can we have this corner for like a pump station?
So would there be any interest in some of these other options that we've kicked around, like coming in with a, a rural residential? Zoning change and then seeking connection with the city. And is there water and sewer? Uh, we know there's water out there, but what is the sewer connection, if you know, Mr. Ralph?
I'm not sure what, um, the airport has for the sewer connection. I think more the model that the, uh, owner was going for is the, um. Kind of the ranches to the northwest. Um, I believe that's off of B and W Road. I don't have the map in front of me currently, but, um, and there's even, um, I believe a bakery that's run out there. There is a, uh, which, uh, also is, yeah, like I said, like the, the model that our, uh. Um, developers looking at.
Okay, thank you. Um, other thoughts you'd like to provide us? So you've kind of heard the general discussion, but continue that or other questions for the applicant? The major street plan, I wasn't entirely clear on that. Maybe this goes back to planning staff. Um, this. Proposal as it's presented to us is not about the major street plan. Looks like there's, it's, it's a little bit west of it. If I, I got my spacing right.
It's right on the border of. I mean, if you look at the map, that's what it calls for.
Well, it's got a big, that big curved line. I mean, I was just trying to get the geometry straight.
Yeah, so it's right on the parcel line, that road.
So if they were to come in with a subdivision request. The logical thing would be to require a larger set aside for that east.
Yeah, uh, at the very least, the right of way would be required.
Just on that, just that corner where it flips it.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Um. As I'm looking at the, at the, the application, and this is the one that was provided to us as an amendment to our packet. It talks about proposed zoning for the proposed fifteen acre subdivision that goes on, described two five acre lots. Totalling ten acres and one ten acre lot to be some commercial, that just makes twenty. We, yeah, that just struck me as, let's be clear what we're doing here. Uh, this is which, twenty or fifteen?
It's twenty. I believe, um, an earlier iteration was fifteen.
Okay, so again, we're, we're seeing. This is the retread, it's a three tread or so of the original application.
This isn't the only one. A lot of them go through multiple iterations.
All right, but.
Not hold that against.
What I would hold, hold against them is correct. What I would like to see is the one that we approved be complete. And appropriately referenced and the dates match the amendments. So again, I'm, I'm, uh. Perhaps being a bit pedantic here, but looking down the road, when all these things get drug forward and the lawyers take it apart. By word, I'd like to see these things be tightly put together. Mr. Harris, you'd like to comment on that?
Well, yes, um, ultimately, this has nothing to do with development. This is zoning district amendment. Um, there is no findings regarding. By plan development or even, uh, a description of. The various lot sizes, all that is required is that they, applicant has provided such mass surveys as required and that they have. Demonstrated that the proposed zoning district amendment comply with the following criteria. Um, so. Yeah, that is what the basis is on is whether. And, you know, planning and zoning is sort of legislative discretion. The zoning district amendment application, uh, you know. That are not adequately addressed, that's the old language, but it's demonstrated, uh, that it complies with all of those criteria. Um, and also whether they're, you know, it's, it's prudent to allow something like commercial, which. Opens up a whole, uh, range of possibilities, um, for small lot. Or sorry, rural residential as well, so.
Well, okay, so for example, are we approving a fifteen acre lot zoning change or a twenty acre lot zoning change? Well, we can infer that it's twenty, but it says fifteen at one point. Those, that is, doesn't get into details of what they might do with the property. That just gets into the coherence of exactly what is. We have a survey. So the suggestion from staff would be we go with the map and let the words spill over the edges. All right.
Yeah. Okay, we also don't have a requirement that all the dates line up or anything like that, so I don't feel like you can hold that against them either. I mean, yeah, it might be nip like sloppy or whatever, but. Can we point to something that says they have to have everything in order as far as dates and that kind of stuff? I, I don't know.
Well, I would say absolutely. If something says fifteen at one place and twenty somewhere else. The dates on these, these comments don't bother me at all. But yeah, it's either twenty acres or it's fifteen acres or thirty acres.
Well, I agree with that part, but like, we have a survey map.
Right, but it ought to be consistent throughout the entire document. When it goes before the county commissioners, they shouldn't have to ask these questions. We ought to be resolved in these questions.
Sure.
Okay, so moving right along, what did you like to add to that, Mr.?
Yeah, so I would, I would just add, um, you know, as I'm processing all of this. Um, I feel like we have kind of two choices at this juncture. Um, you know, Mr. Inkley's brought up some deficiencies in the application. It hasn't really discussed commercial. Um, so I believe one of your options is to table this so that we can gather more information. Um, the other option is to make a decision. You can, you can pass it on with a vote for approval or a vote for denial. Um, now, um, just to discuss this a little bit farther, um. That if this is, if, if, if we can get information that will help you to make a positive. Recommendation, then I think that would be the, the best way to go. But if, if you're feeling like, you know, even if we get more information about the commercial, this still isn't fitting with the plans. It's not jiving and we're already going to deny it, then why go through the process of getting more information? Um, really, like Matt said, we're looking at zoning. We're looking at what this potential for this property should be. And I will say that the growth area plan, um, there's parts of it. I mean, you could fit it into part of it. You, you might not fit it into part of it, but the whole, the whole purpose of some of the growth, of the growth plan is to. Guide people to the city to hook up to water and sewer, um, and develop to their standards. That's, that's one of the main impetuses of that plan. And this is an area where you could say that that's what we're trying to do. Um, at the same time, you can say, why would anybody develop out here? There's nothing out here at this time. It doesn't make a whole lot of sense. I mean, it's a long range plan, so, um, the decisions we make now may affect decisions in the future and. Um, you know, I mean, I think you can make an argument either way, using the plans to say, yeah, it kind of fits in. I mean, you know, even looking at, um, what's the land use in the, the growth plan, it's the state or whatever. I mean, yeah, it's not meeting the density requirement, but what, what kind of, what's the use in there? It says, well, it says be single family dwellings, which is what they want to do, right? Um, the commercial zoning, it fits pretty well in there because if you, if you look at what, what that is for. Our commercial could do all of that. We could put multifamily in it. We can put, you know, restaurants and businesses and all these things, you know? Um, so it kind of fits, but I mean, I think to the detriment of the application is in, in the, the. What the applicant's trying to do is they don't have water and sewer, which is kind of the biggest part of this whole, whole scenario. Um, so anyways, I just wanted to provide some more background, kind of give you some options of how I'm seeing it. And, you know, if you're going to get more information, just, and you know that you, you don't want it to go forward because you don't feel like it's fitting with the plans. Let's not pro, prolong that, I guess.
So, fair, fair point. Um, my right bar is supposed to be with that is that conceptually, I don't have a problem with what I think. These guys are asking for. My concern is that we make a decision on a clean document, to be the word I would come back to. That the reviewers understood what they were reviewing, which was a commercial zone as well as a residential zone. And that the application is, is completely clear on what it is they're asking for. That it's clear that each of the criteria were evaluated with respect to both the commercial and the residential piece. And what I see in front of me, I, I'm hesitant to, to come to that conclusion. So, so my expectation, just speaking for myself, is if this were to come to us clearly saying what we think it really does say. I would not oppose.
I agree. I think that the problem with the Laramie growth plan is that it was a little too vague. Even in terms of a timeline or identifying the limits and. Potential problems with it. If you remember, I did not vote for it. So this is, fits exactly what my concerns back in the day were. That we are expected to make decisions with something that is too vague. And preventing from people to do things that, that. and preventing from people to do things that that currently they can and we don't see any problems with them today. So I would say that I agree with you on that. Because I don't have a problem with a plan if you like, if we have a clean document.
Mr. Ralph, I guess you we can still consider this part of the interplay with applicant. What's your response to the notion that this would be resubmitted in a what I would call a cleaner fashion?
Well, I mean, yeah, I can act. I can absolutely update the report and just we'd just be having the same conversation in a month, so it's it sounds like with concerns to the develop the development plan and the, you know, placement of the commercial lot. I, you know, not much about those facts is gonna change, but I I can do that.
Okay. Public comment, I don't see any public here or online. Do we need to formally open a public hearing? I think not, Mr. Harris. Do I? We need to have a public hearing at this stage?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I think that you just go into it, seeing none.
We will declare this to be the public hearing going what's going twice. Typically, I'd like to close public hearings by an official motion. Oh, is there a move to close the public hearing?
Second.
For the discussion of that motion. Oh, there's a I I close same side. Okay, public hearing is closed, but now we're having mission discussion and action. I think I've made it clear what I would like to do with it. Others?
I agree with you all. So so you guys are okay with the density thing not trying to require them to?
I'm not okay with that.
So I mean, so our best, it sounds like our best option is just to encourage them to apply for two acre lots instead of five acre lots for the residential, right?
Our options are to either recommend approval or deny.
Yeah, yeah.
The reason for denying would be it doesn't fit with the growth plan, but yet they don't have an option to do what the growth plan says, but they can get closer to. Is that something that we could do? I don't want it to.
Yeah, no, I agree with that. Yeah, let's all right, let's follow that thought for a moment. If if they were to have come to us with a small lot residential request and we were to grant it, they could still develop within five acres or so. I believe in that case, the city probably would not have had the objection that the city did raise. It would be closer to a four acre and a state residential.
But you'd still. Well, at two acre, right?
Yeah, so the basis for denial would be inconsistency with the the growth plan.
Yeah. Well.
It could be an intent to get closer.
Sorry, yeah, so if I may, it sounds like, because, you know, it needs to fit to the required findings. So there is that the the proposed zoning district of rural residential does not conform or does not generally follow the suggestions of the Laramie growth or Laramie area growth plan, which recommends dwelling densities of three dwellings per one acre. And further, that the applicant has not demonstrated that the proposed zoning district amendment comply with any of the identified criteria in regards to the commercial zoning. The the piece that is to be zoned commercial. I think that those would be your two possible areas.
Yes, the second one is more easily remedied than the first. That the first is the more difficult one because what can the applicant do to establish fidelity with the growth area management plan is clear, is it?
That's the problem. So we wouldn't ask them to do that.
We have nothing at this point.
Right, so I guess Mr. Harris to deny it on the basis of an incurable deficiency.
They're still smaller.
You could get closer.
Residential, you can get closer.
Okay, this chair, if I may, please. I like to point out a couple of things. This is our first again application of Laramie growth plan. I think it's important that we get off on a good foot. We've got two partners, the county and the city. We have substantial objection from the city, and I think we'll find a way to work with the city on this. And we can do that. There's been references to the density for state residential being three dwellings per acre. That definition does occur in the Laramie area growth plan, but it's just an outline of showing what these various designations mean. It's not obviously code yet. If you do a search for public code that's out there, I think generally accepted to see definition for a state residential is one half acre to one acre dwelling unit. I think it's right. So the density of half acre to two acres dwelling unit. So there's that range out there, you know, where versus three dwellings per acre, which is much denser. So in fact, that's pretty close to small lot residential. That fits in pretty close. And I believe, I can't speak for the city, I believe if this application from small lot residential, the city would not have raised objection they did because it'd be pretty close. And I I think the Laramie area growth plan does give us rounds to die on some because it doesn't fit in with what we got laid out. And there is some, you know, they can come back and with their corrected request. And if it should happen that someone didn't want to buy two small residential to make that figure out, they can do that.
They can do that.
That will and everyone be satisfied with this.
We shouldn't suggest that unless we're going to approve it. If they do that, it's not just an exercise in utility.
Yeah, we we're not we're not making any promises to anybody. We're looking for now. We have in front of us a discrete proposal. We need to dispose of it in in a coherent way with good reasons. And finally, I'd say this is not just some generic piece of property out in the middle of nowhere. This is very close therefore. It's very close to this future plan, collector road, where we're proposing a potentially major commercial development in the future. I mean, this is not, this is an important piece of property. And I think we all do it right. And so my belief is that we should deny this and recommend they come back with a denser residential type valuation. Yeah, I think I I can't speak for y'all, but I think that would be your favorite. I don't know that we can deny with a recommendation, but this Mr. Harris say to that.
No, you didn't deny with the finding and, you know, the board can always or the commission can always provide, you know, feedback to an applicant. In fact, it's generally encouraged on, you know, what what would it take for a successful application?
And I'll say one final thing.
Good.
If we did go ahead and just approve it or recommend approval. How's that leave the city? I I just think that's that's a bad way to get started.
I could take that in the plan.
All right, yeah, that's the and we do have a plan. We've got a map, which we approved.
The county commissioners adopted, yes.
Okay, fair enough. So it will, the the plan is, the interface between the plan and regulations is maturing, so we're admitting that we're in this somewhat gray area. But all right, I think Mr. Harris articulated what would be a coherent motion of the denial based on a couple of things. Would someone like to so move, wrap this up, or do we want to further discussion?
Can we repeat for the motion?
Well, he's not making motions, but he can coach us through it. But the substance of it is we've we've heard two objections voiced amongst the commission. One would be it's the inadequacy of the application and one would be the compatibility compatibility with existing maintenance management plans. Yes, Mr. Wells?
Um, I guess just one last thing while you guys are talking about your recommendation. Commercial zoning is the only zoning that doesn't have a minimum lot size, so I don't know what your thoughts are on that. Obviously, you've been talking about small lot residential, but small lot has a minimum lot size of two acres. If you wanted to go more dense than that, obviously, urban won't fit into that, but commercial would. So I don't know what your guys' thoughts on that, but I'll just throw that out there.
No, that's a a discussion with staff, I think, rather than with respect to to what we're doing with this particular application. And maybe that's an option for.
If you change it to commercial, can then you can you build homes on it?
Yes, yeah.
But the plan. A single family home on 10 acres. If it's commercial.
With a conditional use.
Plan says residential. If we're sticking with the plan.
The the they would, however we zone them, then they'll have to obey the rules that that zoning covers. And that zoning would prevent someone building one house in the middle of the commercial zone, full stop. Is that correct? Until we change the zoning, and that may be something that will happen as a result of the maturation, the growth area maturation, as we'll create some new zones. I think that's anticipated. But those are not available to us at this point.
My my point was if we're trying to conform with the plan, the plan, yes, those other parts says residential.
Yeah, the the thing was the growth plan that showed a commercial center at the intersection of the roads and the trial and progress is a much a relatively high density residential. Okay, well, Mr. Chairman, I recommend, I I moved to recommend to the Board of County Commissioners denial of the Prairie Sign and Zoning District Amendment, CDA dash oh four dash 23. Based on that application's failure to conform its residential disrequirements for this general area as laid out by the Laramie area growth plan. And, yeah. Stop there. I thought that's fine. Okay, sure motion. Is there a second for that motion?
A second.
I guess, well, I guess I've made my point adequately to the applicant that the next thing we see would be a more well edited version. So I guess I would oppose the motion. Others' reaction to the motion as presented to us. Or do we rather bring it to a vote? Okay, do we understand the motion? May I have a second?
A second, I think, your second, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Platt? Yes. Mr. Carron?
Yes.
Did it? You can pass, but we'll come right back to it.
I'll say yes, although I disagree with the reasoning.
We could deny this and ticker with the reasoning, but we've opted not to do that. Had you intended to offer an amendment to that motion?
Um, no.
Okay, so you stand as a, yes, Inkley, yes, Mr. Harris, thank you. So, Mr. Ralph, it sounds like you've got a little bit of work cut out for you. You've you've found yourself at the intersection of a lot of cross currents, but good luck in sorting them out. We'll look forward to see what you come up with.
Appreciate it. Have a good night.
Thank you. All right, moving on to current planning projects. Bearing in mind now, these are not applications. They do not require action. Some of them come to us with with more fulsome recommendations from staff. Others, our options are to send it out for our formal 30 day review period. Certainly, public comments are welcome throughout the process. No one should think that that the opportunity to comment is confined to that 30 days. We can continue to work on these. They have been work in progress sometimes, best several months, or we can suggest that staff's wasting time and we're not interested for certain reasons. So with that, let's look at the amendments to the zoning resolution with respect to outdoor signs. And we would like to present our staff report on this. And and I guess one more just provocative remark. It struck me that there's two quite different pieces of this proposal. First is is the one that Mr. Harris has brought to our attention, that our sign ordinance as it currently stands fails to meet the First Amendment criteria with respect to free speech because of its pervasive reference to content. And that's that's not not pervasive. So there's that piece. Then there's also, I think, separable from that, the actual numbers, heights. What counts as the signs and so forth. So if it works from your staff presentation, those two pieces, tell us what it is we're doing and how it differs. Sure.
Mr. George? Yeah, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. So I think that's a pretty good introduction. I guess the big thing that that the county attorney's office was looking at change was a content based sign issue. In recent years, the Supreme Court has reviewed regulations that are based on content and struck them down. So you can't you can't regulate based on content, meaning you can't regulate based on what they're advertising or what they're for necessarily, but we can only regulate for where we're putting the signs, how big they are, those types of things. So those basic things. So so that's the constitutional piece. So I'll kind of go through some of the things that were changed in our sign regulations that that are that are different from what we had before from going forward or what we're looking at today. First thing is 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 the the definition of onsite and offsite signs. That's kind of a a big area where off off premises, off premises, what's in our current regulations, off premise would be your typical billboards. The definite, it was defined as those signs that are advertising for something, a service, you know, good, whatever, that are not on this property. You're directing someone to somebody else's property, but we're using a sign to track them. So your typical billboards along I-80, you know, your highways and things like that. On premise has always been those are your your business signs. You know, somebody has a business, they're, you know, they want a restaurant and they want to say Eat at Joe's, you know, have a big flash of sign or whatever. So come Eat at Joe's or whatever, I don't know. Or whatever their 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 services. Joe's, Joe's records are.
I'm just going to go with the Joe thing.
Actually, I didn't think about it. I was like, oh, yeah. Anyways, but you get the point. So you're directing the people to your property. That's on premise. And so we've kind of taken those out. We do have an on premise sign, but it's defined differently. It's more of just like an inch and square sign. So if you're going by a subdivision, it says Sunny View Residences or Sunny View Estates or whatever it is to sign that, that would be more of a on premise sign. I think that's how we have it defined in there. Or, yeah, Matt's Ranch. Yeah, and so so, yeah, so there's that. And then a lot of it has to do with where we've taken the content out. We're looking at just saying you can do these signs that are two squared feet. You can have these and you can have like two of them on your property and you don't have to get permit or anything. So you can put up your no trespassing sign and you wear a dog sign. And that would be fine or whatever. And then in in the different zones, it's kind of outlined a little bit differently. And the way we've done it too is to address like political signs as well. If there's political signs, that that fits under the temporary signs category. They can be on the property for, I think it says 90 days. Which maybe we should.
Inform some of our politicians. 90 days limit.
Yeah, yeah. So so anyways, there's that. I guess one of the big things is is so the biggest sign that we allow currently is a 300 square foot sign. And that would have to be, that would be, I guess, the the billboard per se that we have, although, um, billboards, the traditional size of a billboard or like the common size is fourteen feet by forty eight feet, which is actually six hundred and seventy two feet. So what we require or allow now is significantly smaller than that. Um, not that you don't see those signs along I eighty because you do. Um, and so we've limited it to, I believe, a hundred square feet in commercial and industrial. I mean, that's the biggest sign sign base that you can have. Um, so that that's a little bit of a difference. I mean, you're there losing two hundred square feet or whatever. Um. Uh, so so there's that. Um. Yeah, um, I I think those are the kind of the big things that I picked out of this. And and Matt, if you want to jump in, if there's there's more you want to add, whatever, I don't know if I've hit everything or not. Um, but but those are kind of the big things. The sizes are actually, that's the biggest change of our our regulations is how we give that up, so. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, yeah, so there's kind of different categories. There's there's signs that you can have.
Yeah, first of all, like they're just temporary signs, which are regulated on their own.
Right.
Those are not like permanently fixed anything. Um, that is the time limit.
Yeah, and then there's the ones that are by right, which are each zone has, okay, you can have this many signs of this size or less on your property, um, without having to get a permit, basically.
Those are smaller signs.
And then you have the permitted signs, which then goes into each zone. Um, and these are the ones you have to come in for a permit for. They're a little bit bigger, um, typically, um, and you have to get a permit to have them on your property permanently fixed. Yeah.
Clear. Okay. I have a question. So, yeah, there's no questions on on the proposal, and then you can go into, we would like to change it if it makes sense. Please go ahead.
So so for example, the sign when you come on Third into town from from two eighty seven. Where is that sign with a guinea pig wearing a mask and?
It's in the city.
That's in the city.
Yes, that's in the city. Laramie, but yeah.
Those what?
It's in the city of Laramie.
Yeah, 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 I know, I know. But I'm asking. Would that sign, that sign is way bigger. And it's not on anybody's property. I mean, it's on someone's property, but it's.
Yes, it would be a sign.
Not related to the building. So so I mean, I'm saying. I just need to understand what what we're talking about.
It would be considered a. That that wouldn't meet our criteria, our design or science criteria.
Yeah, that would be an illegal sign for posted in the county.
Yes.
Yes.
Correct.
Unlawful.
So. Based on.
Okay.
What we're proposing.
Illegal, not the right word. Contrary to regulations.
Yes.
So are the bigger billboards on I eighty, are those, those would be out of compliance with this?
Uh, no, because that's still, those would all be nonconforming.
So.
So if they tore it down, I wanted to put something else up, it would have to be come into a compliance.
Oh, okay.
But anything.
As long as they're just there, they're okay.
Yeah, the ones that exist exist, and, yeah, we're not gonna make any. We can't, they they legally can can stay there as long as, you know, they don't change the use or whatever.
Okay, but they've until they fall into disrepair, I mean, they're not conforming use as long as the use is maintained continuously over certain periods, standard standard approach.
Standard approach.
How would they be required to come in for a permit?
That would not be required.
No, under state statute. No. Even even if we were to pass the suggested rules here that say you have to.
They're not at her side.
Uh, since they're they're, uh, preexisting nonconforming uses, um, no sort of signing certificate, which this is a signing certificate, uh, could be required. For a non for the existence of a nonconforming existing use. Okay, and that that's called a permit would be considered like a zone certificate. Yes, so the only reach that this ordinance would have to them would be if they were to fall into disrepair, then they would lose their grandfather status. And then they would, okay, thank you for that clarification.
And it just just for your, to be aware, like, we have never, I've, since I've been here, I'm not never, but like, since I've been here, we've never received a application for a three hundred square foot billboard, ever. Um, I think we have done a couple, but they were along like, um, some of the small, it was like smaller, not not Interstate eighty, it was like one thirty or two thirty, whatever. People came in and got like, you know, thirty square foot sign that's kind of an off premise sign or whatever. Um, so so we're not really seeing a whole lot of those big signs, I mean, at least in the last fifteen years. So so I've never got one over like, yeah, thirty, sixty feet of camera square feet, so.
So another, just the the difference question, uh, many of us may remember that the tumbleweed gas station came in for a sign, and I believe they were denied because of their height.
That's correct.
And so as the height changes, does this change maximum heights of signs? Or they are now?
Um. I'd have to, I did not do that conversion.
I can pull it up. If you pull up the old stuff, then I can look at the new stuff. I don't think any of us felt deprived of that sign disappeared, but let's be clear what we're saying.
Uh, it's, so that would have been an on premise sign formerly.
Yes.
Which.
Uh, it had a, the current ones have a twenty foot height. And and.
I believe ours, we should, I think we shrunk. Twenty five feet, actually, in commercial.
Okay.
I was just. That's for permanent, but if we're looking at on premise.
On premise is twenty.
It's twenty, okay, so it'd be the same. So there's no change.
Yeah, I have questions.
All right, so other questions for what's being proposed? That that what was added to the packet were some comments that I had. As for our previous meeting, I had some difficulty with this. So, uh, perhaps I could walk through those and we could discuss those and see if anything appeals to my colleagues by way of amendment. The the whole the whole issue strikes me as as somewhat newer territory for this commission in that, under the general authority we have to zone for health, welfare and general safety and morals of the county, uh, is where this comes from. Uh, on the scale of of land use planning, we have, one end of my mind, things that are like like pollution, where it's a clear safety issue and it makes sense for us to impose land use restrictions because of things that that any normal person would be fall into the health safety. Other far end of that spectrum would be things I would characterize as aesthetic, where one might say, I hate pink houses. My gosh, everybody ought to have a split roof fence. So anyway, this is moving down that spectrum in my mind. Say what we feel is a reasonable place to put that. The issue of content is a fascinating one because it it's so immediately invites a kind of visceral response. We all kind of want to go to content, but that's not within the Constitution. So as I go through this, I'm thinking, okay, what do I know that's out there and how would it, uh, how would it interface with these proposals as they're as they're presented? I put up a pile of campaign signs over my career, um, and not that they would object, but that that the campaign signs of all three of our sitting county commissioners would be in violation of this were to pass. Just FYI, as you kind of picture those signs floating around.
But they're temporary.
But there are still size restrictions on temporary signs in this proposal. They say the kind of campaign size that you're used to see, uh, which run, yes, sir?
I mean, what I saw was like they're twenty four inches by eighteen inches, like the normal, that's that's.
Talking about yard size, you're talking about. I'm talking about the ones you see out in the county.
The ban.
Which I can assure you, I'll see here in the county.
In the county, yeah.
No, no, I I can assure you that there are signs as large as four by eight.
Mine were a little bigger.
Um, there are still signs out there in the county, in fact. For county commission candidates.
So so like on what property? Because like if they're on agricultural, commercial, industrial, thirty six square feet are allowed to very science.
Temporary signs at at thirty six? All right, look, that could correct my reading of this. Temporary signs on.
I mean, not residential lots, but like a lot of them you find in, I I don't know where people are putting them, but.
All right, they're they're putting them on wherever they can get them, including residential lots. So so again, I'm not saying that opposed of it, let's just be clear what we're doing. Um, the definition of a sign is terribly troubling to me. I I I don't have something to offer by way of substitute, but virtually any surface under this definition casts a sign. I feel some sympathy for Mr. Gurch when somebody comes in and says, where's my my neighbor's sign permit for their American flag? It's three by five flying on the end of a twenty foot pole. That that's a sign. Uh, one to which I think we would all be quite sympathetic. Now, if it was a Confederate flag, we would feel differently. If it was a Nazi flag, we would feel differently, but that's content. So flags are flag. Am I wrong to suggest that American flag on a twenty foot pole would be illegal, would be unlawful under these regs?
I would say that reasonable, which your planners would not mess with that, so.
Would you, because of saying that it's an object used to attract the attention of the public? Absolutely. It's a it's a, that's why one puts up a flag, is a declaration of one's patriotic zeal for all the world to see.
Oh, even the flag of Wyoming?
No, as I put in my notes here to 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 the to the packet, uh, the criteria, the only kind of way you would you would sort anything out is used is kind of an intention thing, where Mr. Gurch would have to decide, did they put that up to attract public attention?
That's where I wish I could say, like, is it selling something?
Are you? Yeah, no, I say that's the blocks. It's an interesting discussion.
No, I don't.
I would be, if I were to complain about my neighbor's American flag to to Mr. Gurch, demand that they be sanctioned, I I don't know, what would you say?
Let's say, I'm gonna call the jury's office until they.
All right, well, I'm, well, let's set that thought aside for a moment. I was, no, I was, I was just curious. And again, as they look out across the landscape and think about how this thing would apply, what signs do we see? No trespassing signs are a common one. They would probably fall under the two square feet. Well, you might be kind of pushing that. That's not very big. They're typically attached to post, which bring down property rights. So.
We looked up that size and that new infinite.
Okay, and would would, what about the five foot setback? I don't want to put a, I don't want a setback by no trespassing sign, five feet, that's posed all those beautiful posters.
That's for an on premise sign. The setback.
Yeah.
That's not an on premise sign.
That's an on premise property sign specifically. So that.
So, yeah, and signs.
And that would be allowed by right.
Are not, there's no setback for those.
That would be a.
I don't want setback for. Signs that are allowed by right. The subsections here, whatever.
So by by trust those trespassing signs would only be be limited in terms of the number of. And what was your response to my concern that that if we're worried about density, if I have six hundred acres, I'm allowed ten no trespassing sign, if I have ten acres, I will have ten no trespassing signs. My suggestion would be that we do like we did with secondary dwellings and control the density, which requires a per acre aspect.
We we considered the comments, but I think ultimately we decided just to leave it. Like, didn't we?
We talked about, we talked about it, and then we wanted, we thought if we were gonna do it to one district, we should do it to all districts. And then the commercial zoning doesn't have.
It doesn't have a minimum lot size.
Yes.
So that would require more consideration for this commission.
Um, I think the amendments I was suggesting would simply say if there is minimum lot size, that's the one that controls the density. But I I don't think that's a stumbling block to simply say if you have a minimum lot size, this applies to that minimum lot size.
Right, we also thought ten signs on an acre district.
So you get, so then, then our response to that would be if you want to do it as a function of acreage, that should be applied throughout. And you're gonna have to pick an acreage limit for commercial, because one doesn't exist. Because it has no minimum lot size.
Okay, so we would.
So that's why.
We are wrapping these around existing zoning districts, so why not simply say there is no density requirement on commercial, the density requirement on these three zones is such and such. Each zone is being addressed separately.
You don't have, but then you wouldn't have a per acreage function for.
Correct.
I would recommend that if you are going to do it per acreage, that that is applied throughout, because then you could have a massive commercial zone, and they wouldn't have a per acre allowance. Um, whereas in agriculture, well. So that's sort of inequitable.
Okay, that that does not strike me as inequitable. They're different zones, they have different rules. That's the whole point of time, place, matterless place, right? Now, we'd simply say agricultural is one where it's most dramatic, and that we have such huge variation in sizes of agricultural properties. And commercial would simply be, uh, it could be a a number as you guys have suggested, or leave that alone, would be my suggestion. But I've also, just by virtue, to walk you through my my amendments, all been beyond that go to much more relaxed sizes and heights. That's just in the spirit of, I think these are are too tight, and they would be difficult to enforce, and the fact that everything basically that could be construed is constructed to attract public attention is a sign. So, uh, maybe I'll just ask my colleagues, what's your reaction to the the more relaxed sizes that that I was proposing? Unnecessary finding where they are. Well, I don't have any comments. Okay, I mean, you're you're, I I'm quite neutral on all this.
I I'm fine with where they are. I I mean, I do think aesthetics is a legitimate reason to. Pickles about this.
The sizes that have been proposed by staff, you're comfortable with those as regulation.
Yes, certainly have their reasons.
Yeah, well, let's hear their reasons, where those kinds of sizes come from.
Uh, yeah, so Matt, Joe and I, um, had have met multiple times on this and discussed the sizes. Uh, we reviewed other, um, jurisdictions, information, the city of Laramie, Laramie County. Laramie County is actually really close to what was to be proposed. Uh-huh. We looked at those for where we got them. Um, so we did our research, um, and then came up with what we thought was prudent. Um, and put those together, and that's what we have.
Good.
Mr. Chairman. I said I'm neutral. Doesn't mean I don't care. It means I don't have any particular comments, you know, about what's been proposed to us. I'm fine with that.
Good day.
Well, I don't, uh, it's hard to relate to these sizes without actually seeing examples. I'm I'm fine.
Would you like to see examples? I mean, this is not a pressing demand, uh, and as I said earlier, in my mind, I I've simply been surveyed the county in my mind about how this would would lay all to the county.
Well.
If you wanted to.
Mr. Chairman.
We certainly could, Mr. President.
It is pressing. Um, we have had on the books now for over a year facially unconstitutional regulations. So either get rid of them or act on. I mean, this is not an example of good governance.
All right, a fair comment. It goes to the first of the two issues here. We could solve the constitutional issue without affecting all of the sizes and heights. It could be much more generous with all of those and still be constitutionally Western. So the urgency which Mr. Harris is bringing to our attention is that the statute as it stands is unconstitutional. It should be replaced. I don't begin to argue with that. Okay, so. All that said, I guess I've heard two voices. Supportive of what staff has presented. Mr. David has suggested that maybe a little more thinking about it. I I think that I have thought about it. That's amendments to propose. For which I'm not very grateful to support. I'd like to make a motion to.
I'd like to hear what the public thinks.
Dispose of this.
Hope that we move this into public comment stage.
Good. So let's let's make a a formal motion that we post this for. Public comment and hearing at whatever date. You guys want to pick a date for us to throw into our motion?
I believe February.
Unless you want to do a special meeting in February.
You want to share some dates with Mr. Kornick, so she can fashion her motion?
I'm doing a calculator. For sure, thirty day, thirty days from Saturday would be. January fifteenth. Our January meeting is January tenth. Just for.
Next three, I mean, the fourteenth of February.
Is there sympathy for a special meeting for this?
It's urgent. I mean, I guess that's a question for Mr. Harris, isn't it? Is it urgent enough that we should have a special meeting or can we wait till February?
No, it's, yeah, it can wait until February. I mean, it's just urgent. That, I mean, this has been known for some time. Um, I think I brought this to this commission's attention. Over a year ago.
Now you're ready for your show back? Patience is understandable. Found its way into my camp. All right, be that as it may.
I would add too, that we're we're working on it too. It's not like we're not doing.
Now I'm feeling better. Okay, we were respectful of Mr. Harris' comments. We were just slow.
Is our February meeting?
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth. So let's close it a few days before so we don't end up with the last minute comments, like a week before. So say until February seventh. Yeah. Public commentary until February seventh.
Okay, uh, so let's let's clarify that and the motion is to.
Sign regulation amendments for public comment. From whenever you can, when can you open it? Saturdays? Until February seventh.
We wouldn't have to.
Yeah.
With that date, but.
I just, we have to have that posted or to the paper by like noon tomorrow. Not that it'll be huge.
Okay, we'll just say, can we just say as soon as possible until February seventh?
Okay, maybe we can, we'll get it posted by thirty eight or the seventh.
That's still usually thirty days.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Direct us to publisher, we'll get it done.
Direct you to publish.
For for public here on the fourteenth, closing the the public comment on the seventh.
So, staff's clear on the motion? Yeah, their second. I second it. For the discussions. Mr. Platt.
Hi.
Hi.
Mr. David.
Hi.
If we vote no, motion carries. Thank you. Do we need to take a short break? Okay to proceed, much pleasure. Keep going?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, fencing. Who's presenting that? Obviously, it's something one of the commissioners worked on, but let's start with our. Staff report.
Suppose, uh. Here on behalf of Mr. Gertrude. Okay, just giving a quick overview. So. This is. Uh, something that we've seen, obviously, in July of this year, there was. Now, a new requirement added to subdivision regulations that are subdivision statutes that the county has to as part of a subdivision. Permit application, receive information and documentation on the construction of perimeter fences. For any lands which are h- are adjacent to land upon which livestock can be legally brought. Which is all land. So, now we have to. Essentially determine compliance with. What is considered lawful fence under the ag statutes. Those ag statutes give three strand barbed wire. More of a bucking rails, what it looks like. I don't have the statue in front of me, or then just anything that is demonstrated to be capable of. Capable, yeah, capable of. Stopping breaching livestock. So, um. When that, prior to that law going into effect, I approached this commission to to see. Uh, you know, not even suggest, but to to see if there was any interest on developing regulations for wildlife friendly fencing as part of that. Uh, because from my recollection, it seems like every single time we have subdivision permit application through. There's comments from Game and Fish about wildlife friendly fencing. So, based upon that, and the directive I received from this commission, Commissioner Ben David and I. Have gone through to develop sort of somewhat like friendly standards for perimeter fences in accordance with this new requirement. Because eighteen. Eighteen five three oh, something also says that any requirements are the minimum counties can be more stringent. So it would be within our authority to do so. There are other counties such as Teton which have developed. The some pretty stringent and honestly expensive regulations for exactly what fences can be within Teton County. And. This is where we stand. I guess Commissioner Ben David. I think that we had some questions on. Exactly what. Comparing the, which is included in the staff packet, comparing the sort of wildlife. Wyoming Wildlife Foundation's, you know, fencing standards or recommend date, recommended fencing standards to. What you have proposed and and why. You know, only three wire barbed fence or buck and rail should be. In the regulations when there are like range of other fencing solutions.
So I went with what, and that was my question for you for the legislation. And they. What I read is that you have to have three barbed wire.
Yeah.
Fencing. So, if you have three barbed wire, the only things that. Match what is recommended by the Wyoming Wildlife Federation is. Three strands. If you can have it smooth, so bow, but the word barbed wire is in there, so. If it's smooth. If you can have smooth, then you don't have to have a a solid. Top.
Yeah, um, I suppose the under.
Barbed wire is very specific thing with barbs on it, and that is really bad for wildlife, both the bottom strand and the top strand.
So the standard. Eleven twenty eight one oh two is. Three, basically three strand barbed wire fence, post and board fence. Or full four pole fence with round holes. Uh, which are either upright or leaning. Nails wires or otherwise, and then all other fences made are constructed of boards, rails, poles, stones, hedge plants or other material. Which is declared to be as strong and well calculated to protect enclosures. Uh, and is effective for resisting breaching livestock as I was describing. So really, it's. What constitutes a lawful fences. Rock.
Anything.
Yeah, you could. Yeah, use hedge stones, I suppose.
So, I mean, I guess the question to to you would be, this is the proposal before us. Compared the strength of the state law.
Uh, yeah, I think it certainly does.
Answering your questions.
Yeah.
So, so what the Wyoming Wildlife Federation. Recommends the most is three smooth strands at certain heights. And then in places where you can't put posts in, they recommend bucking rail. All the others are possibilities, but they're not priority. They're not considered. Wildlife friendly fences. The the two options that are preferred for wildlife are. Three smooth strands. Oh, alternatively, the middle one can be borrowed. At certain height, eighteen inches above and more than forty two most height. And in places where you can't put. Posts in, then to use bucking rail, again, with eighteen inches above ground and. No more than forty two. And then you have to take into consideration that. So if you're on a slope like this and you put a fence like this. Underneath, you can't jump over, so it's more than forty two. So you have to adjust your fence to accommodate for the power.
Those criteria are embodied in the proposal that's proposed. So, so you're satisfied with. What is being proposed to us tonight?
Yeah, I mean, you can put. Electric fence, if that's okay with. With the law, but.
All right, I don't know that I saw that in.
I didn't put it in because I thought the requirements were stringent. More stringent than they may be, and these are the recommended, the most recommended by the.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, you know, so. According to the Wyoming Wildlife Foundation, their ideal fence is really a four strand fence with wooden posts. Smooth wire on top, two strands of barbed wire in the middle and smooth on bottom. Um, but I mean, then it also. You know, recognizes that that's not always going to be the case. So then it has other. Uh, you know, kind of solutions where you got three strands on top that have vinyl markers smoothed on bottom. For another four strand, or then sites where lower seasonal livestock you use. Um, use it. It's a three strand, all smooth wire fence. Post and rail fence. So. I don't know, yeah. I guess, did we want to kind of allow people like a little more? Latitude and and determining compliance.
You've had, you're up in your paragraph C, you've seemed to have offered wide latitude. If someone wants to make a special proposal, that's what I read it.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to address our comments to what's in front of us, and it looks to be like that's covered. And if you, Mr. Harris, are satisfied that we are not. Preempting state law by being less stringent, then we have something we can. We can work with this, Mr. Harris.
Yeah, I I just want to bring up some some thoughts too that just maybe we can think about. This this could be a substantial, I mean, it will be a substantial cost just to put up fences, right? For subdividers, if that's, if they don't get permission from all the surrounding owners not to, then they have to put up these fences. Um, I'm not sure what the cost cost difference is to put up a wildlife friendly fence compared to a regular fence. But what about those properties that already have a perimeter fence? You know, they've already got a fence that's all the way around the property. And now we're saying, well, you gotta actually tear that one down and put in wildlife friendly fences. Do we consider that? Do you want to exempt that, or are we just saying, yeah, we just wanna protect the wildlife or whatever, you know? Um, so that's one area that.
May I interrupt? I thought this was going forward, going forward.
We'll be going forward, right? But like.
New subdivision.
A new, yeah, if a new subdivision comes in and that land is already fenced, now they have to put in a different type of fence. Does that make sense? Like, they've got ten acres, right? And they've got a fence that goes all the way around, a perimeter fence. It's four strands of barbed wire. Um, and now they're gonna submit an application and we're gonna tell them, actually, you gotta take off the top and the bottom and replace that. I mean, is that okay with everybody? I mean, I.
I think we should, yeah. We're already taking away wildlife habitat by by, you know, developing the land.
Okay, let's let's finish, Mr. Gertrude, just what what others, other specific.
Yes, so other other things. So, let's say this. There's a property, so there's ten acres and there's housing all around it, right? Okay, it's it's already been disturbed for, I mean, that. The damage has been done when it comes to wildlife. If houses are all around this, are we going to require them to put a fence to fence out all the neighbors' houses?
We didn't statute.
I mean, no, but like a wildlife friendly. Um, we would have to do this fencing if they didn't get approval. Again, is that something that we want to do? I mean. I mean, you talked to the Game and Fish guys, if there's houses out there, damage is, you know, that there are, that's already disrupting, you know, wildlife.
Let me put it in 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 simpler terms. If we're requiring them to put a fence, the fence has to be wildlife friendly. That's all we ask. We don't have to make them put a fence up. If if they can prove that everything around them is fenced, I'm so there, they can be exempt. But if they, if we require them to put in a fence, it has to be wildlife friendly.
Okay, so if they already have a fence, you're okay with not making them take it out and put it wildlife friendly?
If they already are fenced and I'm not changing anything, then I'm not required of that.
That would, that would be an amendment to what we have in front of us, because right now, if my reading right, it says they have to meet these requirements. Okay, so you're inviting up an adjustment to these that would say any newly constructed fences.
Yeah, the last thing is. The last thing is, is like, I mean, we we could base whether we want to put or require wildlife friendly friendly fencing. On what we get back from Game and Fish. If they recommend it, which they usually do. Um, then we do, we require that. If they don't recommend that, or if they say, yeah, we're fine with just a regular fence, then we don't require it. I mean, that's another option that we could look at. That would actually pull in their comments in a way we could use them, you know, because it'll be in our regulations. By what they say, but I'm fine with whatever you guys decide to do. Um, but I was just, I wanted to bring these things up for discussion and thoughts.
And and that last one. We can, through our regulations, empower Game and Fish, is what I'm hearing. Well, at this point, we have these review and we get all the reviews back, but none of them are are authoritative.
Yeah.
But can we make them authoritative? Like, that was what Mr. Gertrude says he's been hitting at. Is that, was that our?
Yeah, I think we can.
Okay, thank you. I was just wondering, David, do you have any idea what cost to put in a three strand barbed wire fence? A rough idea?
It's like a thousand bucks per a hundred feet or something like that. I have no clue.
Did we look it? We looked it up and it was like, a lot.
It it's a lot, you know.
Well, I don't, I mean, they're already like, they're gonna have to incur that cost unless they can get the permission.
Gonna have to build a fence.
We didn't, I mean, we didn't cause this this whole perimeter solution and technically this, the perimeter fence has been being required. Under those ag statutes for some time now. I mean, over a decade. It's just now. It's the county's responsibility to require the plans.
Yeah, so so the point is, then putting four strands or five strands. Yeah. So so the point is, then putting four strands or five strands that people put is way more expensive than three.
Yeah.
So in fact, we're making it cheaper by making it smooth, smooth wires cheaper than barbed wire. So everything we're doing here is actually helping. If it meets the state requirements, then then it's making it cheaper.
Would we need to adjust the draft ordinance to accommodate the point of tearing up fences? Or drawing out existing fences? That was your suggestion. That's not covered currently.
Yeah, I mean, if you want to allow them just to have user resistant fences, then we would probably have to put some type of an exemption.
Yeah, well, essentially, yeah, because the the prohibition against county regulation of nonconforming uses, that doesn't apply to subdivision regulation. Only so.
That's true.
So um yeah, like, you know, if they say, well, it's not even more amusing, we say, well, you're trying to sub it.
I thought we have saying that if there are any deviations or subs- special circumstances. They ask the commissioners to approve, you know, they bring a proposal.
I mean, I guess they could.
But they they, yeah, they would stop to provide evidence that the fence allows animals to jump over and crawl under easily without injury. It's highly visible for both ungulates and birds.
Except though.
Well.
I I like the idea of letting game and fish look at individual, you know, comment on individual applications. There are places where it's not gonna be a big deal. They say that.
Yeah.
And then those people wouldn't have to change what they already have if they were guts.
I I'd like to give them carte blanche to.
Yeah.
Tell what they have to do for subdivisions. It's all in a county. Is there some way we can corral that?
Yeah, it's, I mean, essentially, yeah, we can, we can outsource, you know, and say like, it needs to be addressed in light of of game and fish response. But at the same time, um you know, if if they have sole discretion over like what they want to see. Then that could open us us up for arbitrary, because we don't have any standard to go off of. I think we have to develop our standards. Um essentially direct game and fish to review in accordance with those standards.
So for example, a a game and fish biologist, Lauren, um can look at the subdivision proposal and say, well, this. Terrain has really steep slopes, and so we need to see there the bottom at least eighteen, so everybody can go under. Just so you know, one of the biggest expenses right now for landowners and uh a lot of NGOs in Albany County is actually removing and replacing fences. My students volunteer this uh several times a year. So. If we put the regulations in there, then it will save people a lot of money and and heading. So I think. I think we have enough flexibility that people can put in an exemption request that can be reviewed. But and also save a lot of people a lot of money. All we need to do is take that, if if it can be smooth wire, we don't have to have the. The top. Rail. The whole idea is that the the what made it expensive is that if it has to be barbed wire, it needs to be tacked to a pole.
Right, yeah.
Cause on top, yeah, so the bulbs don't catch the elk jumping. So if if it can be a smooth wire, it's sort of a barbed wire, we don't need that.
So I mean, what we have so far is the the top wire shall be smooth and placed no more than forty inches above the ground, where wooden posts are used. Which, so the posts are the vertical. It's that where wooden posters are used, the top wire can be replaced with or tacked to a wooden rail. Um, okay, so you're saying that like if you have those posts, then you can just put up a wood rail.
Put a wooden rail on instead of putting this.
Okay, oh, that that makes more sense now, okay.
And and that's what this says, I believe.
Yeah, no, I I had a question. I didn't, I didn't understand that the first, or first, first I said I read it. Okay.
So literally, the the majority does not have bulbs and the height. That's the two things that make a fence wildlife friendly.
Do does. Do people save money with having barbed loose wire?
Yeah, smooth wires way cheaper than barbed.
Okay. So.
And easier to to uh strap.
The only question I I I I love this. I'd be happy to move it forward. The only question I had was the restriction. That was just a geometric issue. When I read this part about slope.
Yeah.
And if you look at the diagram that came from the attached.
Yeah.
It strikes me as untenable. See, can you can you bring that diagram up on our screen? Uh the one that shows that adjustment, right?
Yeah.
It's in the gosh, where's?
That's wildlife.
It's in the in the brochure at the end. We've incorporated it in text, but it's easiest to see that it's more.
Yeah, this document is great for that.
They've got the fifty percent slope and so forth.
Yeah.
Well, there you found it. Okay, so, yeah, that.
Yeah.
Part of that, if you could blow that up a little bit for us.
You can imagine that animal coming from down slope will not be able to jump.
Yeah, can can you can you blow up the the diagram?
Uh.
Maybe not. I was just like, because I want to look at those numbers for a second.
I'm trying to figure that out.
I don't think they actually calculated it. They just gave examples of slope.
Why they didn't actually write the geometry out? Well, then maybe maybe we would have to. I didn't, I didn't do the trigonometry. I just believed the diagram. Well, here's the deal. When you when you adjust, if you use that diagram, there it is on page nine, bottom of page nine. Um and and our requirement says forty inches rather than the forty-two that's listed here. But that aside, if.
I recommend that is forty. And they just say, okay, if you have to, you can make it forty-two.
Okay, but look at the diagram over there on the fifty degree slope. If they're saying that that's equivalent of seventy-five inches. Uh and that's the same forty-two inch post on the right hand side as on the left hand side, which is the diagram said correctly it would be. Then that only leaves you uh that you've got thirty-three inches that's buried in the hill. And to get to our forty, we only got a seven inch high fence.
Yes.
So would we.
Tell them not to build on the slope.
Tell them that they can't build a fence more than seven inches high.
No, the the idea is that if you make the bottom eighteen inches. The animals can go under and it's not bowed. Animals can go underneath.
Okay, then 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 our language needs to be changed. It doesn't say that it has to be forty-two inches or forty inches. Back up on the text now where it says. Height of the top wire shall be adjusted to geography, da 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 da. No more than forty inches. Okay, so the answer to my problem would be, it would still be forty inches high. It would just, the bottom spacing would address.
So we need to add um. Oh.
That doesn't seem to be as quite with that sense. It suggests that it has to be equivalent forty inches, taking the height into consideration. So I think what you, what what I hear you to say is that 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 item A, one one A would be. Have an effective, shall have a height of no more than forty inches, instead of an effective item no more than forty inches. Yeah. Words don't match. If I'm reading them carefully.
Well, I haven't done geometry in a long time, so.
Okay. Not a matter.
So you're suggesting you just take out the part about the slope.
Yeah, I don't think.
If you had a part about eighteen inches above ground.
Yeah, if the concern is addressed by the eighteen inches, then I don't think we need this business of the effective height.
Are you saying we just remove A, little A?
Uh, yeah, is the forty inches somewhere else as well?
Yeah, it's right.
Yeah, it's the the top wire shall be placed.
Okay, then then we don't need A at all?
We don't need A.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd say we, my suggestion is delete A, then it's it's covered by the eighteen inches. The deer crawl under eighteen inches, where they try to jump.
They'll jump.
I mean, I've never seen a deer crawl under a shed.
Yeah, they jump.
That's a problem, isn't it?
Uh, you should go under.
Okay, so if I have a forty inch high fence, eighteen inches.
The forty inches is full jump downs, which are dead now.
Right, but are we going to allow them to have a forty inch high fence on a slope?
We can, because the deer can also crawl under.
Okay, that was my question. I don't, I don't observe deer crawling under fences, but.
They do.
I'm happy to hear they they do. Okay.
The main, the main problem is having the. The barbed wires, even elk that can jump more than that slope with forty uh inches high. Um deer can go under barbed wire.
Sure.
I can show you pictures.
No, I think we've seen it. Jump up at the back. Don't clear them. They're twisted in there.
Twisted.
Into your chapter.
So even an elk can get under an eighteen inch high? Even an elk could get under an eighteen?
A juvenile, an elk can jump these elephants and moose. Uh but if we're talking about juveniles, they'll crawl under.
Yeah, I don't think a bull's gonna make it.
All right, and we're getting back to what we have in front of us. Would that be acceptable to strike that A criteria? Okay, I mean, that's.
It's okay with you.
Yeah.
So uh let's let's work with the document, because the next step would be to put this thing out for uh thirty day, right? Okay, um if if we might, that's, would somebody make that amendment if that's acceptable to? Chair, I'm just trying to, paragraph A, as discussed. So second?
My second.
Uh discussion of that motion.
That motion was for the striking?
Yes. To strike, thank you. Um further discussion. Hearing that, Mr. Platt?
Yes.
Mr. Corning?
Yes.
Mr. David?
Yes.
Yes, we're done. Are there further amendments to propose to the draft this premise? Uh public comments? Was there somebody show up on the screen?
Yeah.
Nope, okay, we have. All right, uh motion to to post this public comment schedule public hearing. That's the next step.
I make a motion that we open this to uh public comments as soon as possible to end on February seventh. Closing since February seventh, and we discuss next meeting on February fourteenth.
One second.
Okay, I've been seconded to post these public comment schedule, public hearing. Further discussion. Platt?
Yes.
Mr. Corning?
Yes.
David? Oh, yes, done, thank you very much. Uh, okay, aquifer protection wastewater regulation. We ready to proceed? I don't comprehend. So, oh, did I skip comprehensive? I didn't put it in my notes at all. Okay, who wants to tell us about the comp plan? Oh, David does. Oh, there it is. That's the old guy. Thank you.
We.
I did have one thought.
Yeah, um so if you saw my memo, um our comp plan is um currently over fifteen years old. Um it was adopted in two thousand eight. Um and this has provided a distraction over the years for by these decisions. Um. A lot of things have happened. Um some of the things that I've I've noted is, um there's really been a push um to have energy type projects in the county. Um which our comp plan mentions wind energy um and how we have good wind and those types of things. But um doesn't give us a whole lot of policy to follow, other than some really general policy instruction. Um the other thing is, is um I guess the new trend um throughout Wyoming and other states is is the solar projects. Um they're becoming more popular. Uh we've been approached a few times um from some different solar projects. Nothing has came to fruition at this time. Our regulations are based on state statute period. We've got the minimums in there. We updated them so that we have those in our regulations. Um but there's, there hasn't been a whole lot of other work on those. Um and we don't have a whole lot of policy when it comes to solar projects either. Um and so there, and there's other other things that have happened. Um I mean, we've got obviously the housing issues that are going on across the nation. Um I mean, there's a housing section, but again, it doesn't really address what's going on right now. Um and then we've adopted the Laramie Growth Area Plan, um the Casper Protection Plan and the Natural Resource Plan last few years. Um none of which are really jiving completely with with the comprehensive plan. Um and so with that, um I just wanted to bring it to your attention, um and maybe discussion. To see whether this is something we would like to look at. Um. I bring it to you now because if if we wanted to entertain something like this, we would need to get this within the budget of the county commissioners. Um to to hire consultants and to go forward with that. And I think now is better time to do it than. Right before budget season's over or something like that. Right now, we can get it on their minds and even see if they're interested, and they may not be interested in in funding a project like this at this time. But um I wanted to bring it to you guys to at least discuss, consider. Um, yeah. I probably wouldn't take anything forward unless you guys were on board, so.
Question, Mr. Gerch? Is there some recommended here rules for updating covers to plans?
Uh, it just depends. I think fifteen to twenty years is probably the comp plan. Yeah, the comp plan says that we should do updates every five years, really. Um but those are ma- those aren't, those aren't like complete updates of the plan, you know? Um I think so much has changed um just with the adoption of the growth area plan. Um that puts that and prior to growth area one, those are kind of supposed to be the same thing, right? Um so that's an area where they just, they're not jiving, you know? Um and. Yeah, so and it it depends. I mean, most jurisdictions have, I think, you know, fifteen to twenty-five years, somewhere in there.
So what's that 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 spectrum look like? Um some of it is just tweaking. Like, uh, there's a a prior to growth area three map in there that doesn't conform. In fact, it it was changed at some point to capture the boundary north, but not south. I mean, it's just kind of editorial. Sure, presumably that kind of thing, we can just pick up in the routine course of things. Then we move into things that you staff would simply. Cue them up and work something out as we go along. All those steps short of what you alluded to a moment ago, hire a consultant, do it all right. So what's your sense of doing these things kind of piecemeal as existing staff and time allow versus dropping the hammer on a RFP?
Yeah, I mean, that's that's definitely an option. I mean, that's something that we could look at. Um. Because, yeah, I mean, if if we're good with kind of the the skeleton of what we already have, you know, if we're looking at. You know, kind of keeping the whole prior to growth there is, you know, similar. Where it gets a little weird with the prior to growth areas is with the growth plan, it's it's consuming prior to growth area one and two in. Like where the South Laramie Water Super District is. It 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 grabs all of that and brings it under, um you know, the growth area plan. Um and and definitely, we could, we could work on, and that's, that's a pretty big deal right there. But I mean, if you mimic what prior to growth area one, or mimic what the growth area plan says, we can kind of plop that in, I guess. Um, yeah, I mean, what's that? We could incorporate PGA one and then just move on and everything that's kind of already existing, leave it the way it is.
Um, maybe another would ask my question. What in that, in that. Set of options in your mind trips the trigger upon, sounds like the big step is RFP consult.
Oh, yeah.
What are those things that you're looking at, moving you to think that that's the way you need to go?
Well, all of the data is out, is outdated. I mean, all of our census data, all of that is like, yeah, we, we went through two different cycles of census since we did the update. You know, another thing that would, would we to want to move to a consultant is to get the public's engagement, buy-in, because so many things have changed. It would be nice to, to have a full-fledged engagement process to go through, to really see where people are right now. I mean, we, we can go through, I guess, if we're just going through a piecemeal, you're not getting the community. It's really going to be our plan. I mean, we, we can kind of, we can try to engage them on those things. But I feel like you would get better engagement and get more information if we're doing the full-fledged plan. And if you have consultants with the tools to do some of that outreach and engagement. So that would, would, that alone is, is a big piece, and I think would be a good, you know, process to go through. And that would, that would really take a consultant. One thing that just really pushes me this way, too, I guess, or one of the other things is, is just, we're working on a lot of stuff right now. We're trying to implement the, the growth plan. Obviously, that's, that's what's after the cap, basically. So we've got the cap stuff we're trying to work through. We've got the growth plan. And so there's a lot of work there. Hiring a consultant takes a lot of burden off of staff, and we can do the applications and the regulation changes and those things that we're trying to get updated in. We use the consultants to, to take that burden, and that's typically why jurisdictions even hire consultants, is because just these processes are so time-consuming. But, you know, I mean, those are the reasons why I would like to, to move forward that way. But that doesn't mean we can't back it off and just, hey, let's, let's work right here, let's work right there, let's work right here.
Well, would it be a viable alternative to sort of follow a line with cities during the city code? In a scheduled process and address one piece of the comprehensive plan and do it, not piecemeal, I said, but, you know, an orderly process? And use a citizen's group.
Right. I mean, we could do something like that. Again, it's like, how is it comprehensive if we're taking everything piecemeal, you know? We're trying to look at the whole situation, you know? You know, we, housing interacts with transportation, interacts with natural resources, which interacts with. And if we're just taking one of those at a time, I mean, you're not getting, I don't know, you're not getting the whole picture.
It's consultation.
Yeah, it's, exactly.
Okay, the, the biggest thought out there is to me is the growth management plan and the intergovernmental agreement. Okay, in that case, we just hired a consultant, do all of that. Okay, so there's a lot of heavy lifting there, but it strikes me, it just has to be between city planning and county planning and legal counsel. So you're not going to be able to off-source that, then we just do that, because that's right. Seems like that's a big piece that needs to be solved before, and then you move to, to the wider coordination or anything else, unless, unless they didn't finish the job for us. But didn't they draft up the intergovernmental agreement for our review?
They have not, that we know of. We haven't.
Oh, I thought that was.
That was, that was what, I mean, at this point, we haven't seen anything. The, the plan was this, I think maybe they're working on something, but I, that's not something. Oh, are you talking about Logan Simpson?
Yeah, yeah, I'm thinking that we just went through all of this handholding of the public and tried to get their feedback and what they want for that piece. So now the challenge is, is in planning department's court to turn that into.
Sure, sure, for that piece, which.
Big piece.
Yeah, still doesn't jive with our comp plan and is, yeah, it's, it's, it's focused on one thing, development outside this, right outside the city, just that one area. So, you know, what goes on Centennial doesn't matter. I mean, there's, there's no look at that, there's no look at the other jurisdiction or other little areas in the, in the county, how we're dealing with development and agriculture areas. I mean, we're, we're just looking at.
Sure, but should we get that done before we then do the thing, like, would be another, just a trajectory, to be honest, to, to.
We can, yeah.
Get things kind of straightened out.
Oh, no, I mean, that's, that's, we definitely can. We do have that, it's adopted, we can move forward with those things.
And if we went forward immediately with the consultant county YCOM plan, then that piece, would that fall in there fail a week?
Well, we, I mean, unfortunately, I mean, in my opinion, it would have been better to do a comprehensive plan and then come back and do this. But that's not the growth plan, but we, that's not how we went forward. Because it just doesn't jive with what we have now. It's, you know, or you could have done it, I guess, part of it, but it was kind of a city-county thing or whatever. So, I mean, I, if we don't want to go forward with it, I mean.
Well, I don't, I don't think that Mr. Gertz is advocating for, like, you know, a halt of like further progression of the Laramie Growth Area.
Right.
I mean, it's, you know, it's on the plate, or it's on those, the order of things that will progress and that will continue to progress. I think with this comp plan, you know, we're looking at like a year or two long period.
Right, I mean, if we were funded, it would be.
These aren't mutually exclusive things by any means.
Right.
And, you know, I'm not advocating for, for one way or another, but I've been pestering David about this much dismay. Is that, I mean, we need a comprehensive, just, just as we did for the first half of the subdivision resolution. And I also have things in progress for the second half of it. We need a comprehensive amendment of our zoning resolution. Looking at land use stable, just base zoning districts. I think it's kind of becoming clear to everyone here that, you know, we could use something like in-between small lot and urban and something in-between rural residential and ag. And ultimately, this is, is the process for, for developing that, that comprehensive zoning resolution, because, you know, it, it needs to happen.
Yeah, no, thanks for that input, and I'm not advocating one or the other, just trying to see how the pieces fit together and realize that we just came off this rather large.
No, absolutely. I mean, it's good points.
What's a comp plan cost?
I don't know. I, I wouldn't have paid as much as. I, you pay as much as you want and they will spend that money, so. I would say a hundred fifty to two hundred thousand is probably good. All rate, old, old park. It's getting late, sorry.
I write plans like this, and it's the standard thing, you know, you got a dollar's worth, you get a dollar's worth, fifty dollar plan. I don't know their thoughts. I'm sympathetic to doing that. It is useful to get a comprehensive view. And I've, I've too have been advocating for years to get our various plans coordinated with each other. The city needs a lot of that. Where you're doing one thing here and one thing here, they don't exactly jive, so I, I'm certainly sympathetic to the concept or mobile timing. But what do you think, folks?
David, right now, it's a couple of big pieces you just talked about. Sort of how, how would you chair the prioritized sequence, though?
With what's going on?
Yeah, I mean, if you look at the Laramie Area Growth Plan, if you look at the Casper.
I mean, the Casper, I think, I think that's kind of everybody's priority, so we've been moving forward with that. You know, we've, we've got some regulation changes today, and then we're working on some other regulation changes to bring forward as well. And that'll pretty much take care of the regulatory parts of the Casper Protection Plan. You know, implementation of some of the programs and other things, I mean, that will be ongoing throughout the time we have that. So that, that's a priority, and that's what we've been working on. Growth area plans, obviously, I think that's the kind of the second area that we want to start moving forward to. So that's, that's number two or whatever, and then, you know, to have a comp plan would be great, and that would be a number three if we went that route. But, you know, if, if we want to take a year and just work through some of those other stuff, I mean, that's, maybe that's what we need to do. I don't, I don't know.
Yeah. No, that, that's all I was, I was curious about. And, and just in general, when you're looking at these big projects that are ongoing, and your day-to-day stuff, are you all keeping up? Are you overwhelmed, or?
We're busy.
Yeah, I know you're busy.
And that's what, that's what we want to be doing, you know? I mean, honestly, like, like I was saying, so the budget year doesn't start till July, so, you know, if, if, if we did go that route, if the Board of County Commissioners was okay with, with funding something like that, we, we would be looking at going out for RFP, you know, half, July sometime or whatever, and start the project in August or whatever. And that would probably run, you know, a good timeline for a comp plan is probably like eighteen months to two years or whatever. So that process would take a while, and, you know, what I've noticed as we've, you know, managed these projects or whatever, you know, there's, there's something we got to do today, and we got to get it all done, and then you've got a while before you come back to, okay, now we got to do this, and then we've got a while. I feel like between now and, and July, we could get a lot done. I mean, we can get the Casper Rocker stuff done, we can start the growth plan stuff. So we would be well into that, and that would be just another project that we would kind of be moving down the, the line or whatever and have time to do that. But, yeah, we're, we're busy right now, so.
Matt, how are you doing? Are you keeping up? Are you overwhelmed?
He's looking for more regulations to, to bring up and change, so he's constantly looking for things.
Oh, yeah, I'm, I'm fine. Hey. Yeah, there's just so much of this where I, you know, I can't make determinations one way or the other. It requires a lot of other people to be, so I'm just part of, part of the whole process. I, I can't just whip out a revised zoning resolution. Because there are a lot of other people that require input. So now, I mean, yeah.
I guess it's a hard question for us. It, it's a money thing. I mean, if they live in funds, we'd say, sure, get all the help.
Right.
Let's get it done as quick as we can, off we go. But I'm simply incompetent to opine on that. I don't know if our county commissioner would like to throw it a thought at this point, but you would certainly be welcome to.
You know, we just approved the other two plans, worked that stat tech did, and then Logan Simpson as well. I'm wondering how that would be perceived by the public to start working on this plan. Is it confusing? I thought we just did that, you know, especially with the growth management plan, but that would be interpreted as a comprehensive plan and thinking that, you know, why are we already back working on that when we just adopted and completed it and looking at it from the public's view? Don't know if you have the support to financially to hire a consultant so quickly after we just paid off last, this year, actually.
What you said, Mr. Gertz, exactly how I felt about the growth, earlier growth plan, that it was done in a long order. I understand the necessities of working with the city, but, you know, to me, it would have made a lot more sense to do both together. But, again, yeah, I, I don't know if, we don't have better use for two hundred thousand of those color projects.
And, and I think what you just said is what Mr. Platt said earlier, as we were talking about the growth area plan, you were saying, well, let's, let's broaden it, keep going, keep going, taking clear out the edges of the county. So we're all on board with that. I wonder if, if a step forward, basically, just spring it off this conversation, would be to try to, to maybe write down some of this discussion, think about priorities, where there are specific issues. Maybe that would help us decide, are these amenable to piecemeal as time is available versus wrapping them all together, right? This whole concept's kind of new, new to me, I know, and I wondered if maybe we all went home, studied the comp plan a bit, just a homework assignment, came back with here are some things that we think need help, input from you guys, Mr. Ayers, to, I, I think on paper perhaps, so it would have to be a useful next step.
Yeah, I mean, that's fine. I mean, we could go and look, and, you know, I mean, thinking about like the growth plan, it would be nice to have that integrated in, you know? I just don't know what that would mean and how, how we would just plop that in the comp plan, you know? Because that would be a good step, just to have it as part of that, but.
I mean, I like the idea of that one, just widening a little further, which we know is in the works, and this intergovernmental agreement is, right? So that, that seems like a nucleus maybe for the comprehensive plan across the whole county. It isn't the sequence we would desire, but maybe it makes sense to go ahead.
And, and, you know, just to comment on that, sometimes the, the sequence is, it is what it is, you know? I mean, there's an opportunity, and we had an opportunity to work together and do something that we've not been able to, to do in, since I've been here at least, so.
So what else can we tell you in response? So just go ahead.
So I don't, I don't know that I have a good feel for how useful a tool the comprehensive plan is, but say on some of the contentious energy projects that you mentioned, would it have been helpful to have a plan that did have guidance in for making those decisions?
Oh, absolutely.
So those are going to be, those are going to be ongoing, right? They're going to keep happening.
Right. I mean, and, and the hard thing is too, is like, you know, you know, staff, we have our expertise. But a lot of times you get these consulting firms, and they have a lot of expertise in these areas that they can bring to, hey, these are some good policy suggestions, you know, to work through and put in your plan or think about at least. So, so, yeah, that'd be, that's another benefit, but.
It doesn't sound like it's terribly useful right now because it's so outdated, right?
Yeah, that's the hard part is, it just is, but.
I mean, you know, you look at, at other counties, yeah, I think like Nautron County specifically, their comp plan and their zoning, I mean, it's just, it's like a seamless mesh. I mean, we're probably a decade or two off of that, you know, even, we've kind of gone just in disregard of the comp plan for our implementing zoning. So, yeah, and I, I think that ultimately is the nice thing about the comp plan, is that you get all the citizen input. So it's, it's not just, you know, seven people that are deciding, you know, how, how an entire county is supposed to be structured.
You know, and honestly, our comp plan now is not as useful as it could be. The maps in it are pretty hard. They didn't, we didn't even have maps in GIS, but, I mean, they gave us the GIS data, but it was like, we didn't have maps where we could just pull it into GIS and manipulate it and look at what's going on. Basically, what we have is a paper map for a giant county, and you're trying to figure out what is going on here, you know? And technology is just different, and, and all these, you know, what we're using for tools is so much different now. Just limits the usefulness of what we have just because of kind of the era we were in, but, but, yeah. Like I said, there's no product, you guys, for your discussion thoughts. It would be nice to get it updated, because we do need to do a comprehensive update of, of the zoning to actually follow the comp plan, which never really has, you know? We've done what, what's been asked of us and what previous boards has wanted for us to do.
Well, we don't, in all the options that we just continue on without, you know, really reliance on the comp plan.
Well, zoning itself is not based on anything except the tax rules. I mean, let's be,
Exactly. So that's what I'm saying. Yeah. So, right.
I, I, I'm, well, this is, the, these are all great points. No, it's educational for me just to help think through this, but. Yeah, you make a good.
We do have a County Commissioner in our room, so it's good that she's here. Yeah.
For the County Commissioners as well as for ourselves. I, I, I think a very strong case could be made as, as we're making over the course of this discussion. Sort of forward up to the idea of where you guys talk.
I mean, and yeah, I, I get, I get where Tricia Rivera's coming from. You know, we have spent a lot of money on plans in the last couple of years, so.
We know that just that, David, you know, as you well know, we've had some unexpected expenses.
Oh, absolutely.
That have.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can say that again.
Can't even benefit from one of them yet, so.
Well, it's, it's pressure for crying. Well, you just put your thumb on one. Man, I mean, that is huge and it's getting bigger and it's, it's across the county and, and I don't know if anybody even thought the work of the comp plan windmills were ready or the power motors not on stock tag, not two thousand cents.
Well, I mean, to the credit of our plan, it does mention the wind projects, but it, it provides a map saying, this is where the good wind is, you know, and it's like, yeah, we should promote this, but there's no like policy, like decisions like, well, we should consider these things when we're doing this, or we should consider these things. That's, that's not existent.
We've got to.
Yeah, that was, that was my point.
Yeah.
So more solid ground to make decisions on would be good, but that could be done piecemeal too. It has to be.
Sure.
I don't have any feel at all for the budget. I think, I think it's a question for the Commissioners.
Well, honestly, I've, I've never been funded so much to do projects in my, my, uh, office um, until the last few years, so. Appreciate that. It's been nice to actually do some, some planning, so. So, yeah, it might be somebody else's turn, like, you know, all the things that are breaking, we should probably fix this.
We aren't the most prosperous county in any stretch, but we are accounting single redevelopment that should be guided thoughtfully and systematically with a good comp plan.
But I guess back to what you said, Chairman, maybe we do just kind of look through the plan and see maybe there's some things that we can just address, you know? Um, we could do some piecemeal updates and, yeah, big red flags, those types of things and uh, we don't necessarily need, need to hire consultants to do that. We could do some outreach to, I mean, maybe not as, as comprehensive, but I don't know.
What if we put together a wish list and then, and then see where it kind of takes us? And if there's just a whole body of things that's like, well, yeah, give me fifty years and I'll get through it all, then it will become obvious that that's right for the RFP.
Identify the need.
Yeah.
Well, now that I'll get a little more familiar with what we're working with too, if we're all going through it again. I haven't been through it for a while, so you get exercise for yourself, so.
Okay, so does that give us some of the kind of move forward?
Yeah.
So then if county swells into a windfall, it'll be ready.
Exactly. Yeah. Well, I mean, that's kind of a plan where it's windfall. Farms and it will be.
Well, you're supposed to be pushing a bunch of that impact.
Can we have a break now?
We may have a break now. A good suggestion. Thank you very much. We are recess. We're using the Alpha.
Yeah.
That's probably fine. Okay, we just got the queue there.
Okay, cool. Thanks. Yeah, we're not on YouTube anymore, but this is still being recorded. It's on Facebook.
Okay, well, apologies to anybody that's listening to this recording. We have some technical difficulties that, that caused the interruption, but we're back on track. Okay. And we're moving down through our agenda of current planning projects to looking at wastewater regulation amendments, particularly how they relate to zoning, uh, parameters for aquifer protection. So, Mr. Yerich, tell us where we are.
All right. Let me find where we're at. Okay, um, so yeah. Right now, we just wanted to introduce, um, these amendments. Um, we're, we're still working through some of the, the kinks and things, um, with these amendments. And these amendments are to the, the, they'll, this will amend the, for the um, zoning resolution to remove, um, the requirements, the standards for wastewater um, disposal systems and then we would then replace, or not replace it, but add that to, um, the subdivision regulations with the amendments, um, based on what's provided in the CAS brock protection plan. What you're seeing, um, the changes include, um, and this is from what currently exists, is new septic systems would be required to be advanced treatment units in the aquifer protection area, zoning overlay zone. It provides standards defining what an ATU is, um, advanced treatment unit. Um, and then require pumping of septic tanks every five years and inspection when property is being transferred. Um, also includes requiring a professional engineer design the system. Um, and then proposed amendments would require inspection and certification by the PE to ensure the installation was completed in accordance with the engineer plans. The county would continue to do their inspection as well. So, so yeah, those are the big changes in this. Like I said, this is, this is a first look. Um, there's some things that we're working through when it comes to, um, licensing bumpers. I think that's about it that, that I'll need to work through with County Trains Office. But this is the first look. Um, I guess we get your feedback. Um, I don't expect a vote or anything tonight. Um, but if there's, if there's things we want to change or if this is close or whatever, let's, I guess, kind of come together. If you haven't had a chance to look at it either, we can, you know, just, this is not a final time.
So just, you know, give us a little broader context. Uh, add section eighteen to what? Given the fact that we are unfamiliar with anything outside our.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. So, so yeah, we're removing from zoning, which is your area of, of interest, um, to all, all, the, the name of the, the documents that we're putting into is the Albany County Design and Construction Standards for Small Wastewater Facilities and Regulations For Permit to Construct, Install, or Modify Small Wastewater Facilities. So it's basically in layman's terms, that's our small wastewater standards, so, yeah.
And that would be section eighteen. County Commissioners' vast.
Yes, yes.
Regulation.
Back in the day.
And is, uh, prolonged under the delegation agreement?
Correct.
Questions at the outset? I had some, uh, David, colleagues? So I guess the, the, I mean, the main object of this, correct me if I'm wrong, was that we felt that our, our statutory guidance was more congruent with this being a delegation agreement than in zoning. So, well, if it either, let's do it where it works the best. Uh, I like what you've done here and it looks like it's pretty much taking what StanTech recommended for zoning and just putting it into wastewater. I have a lot of just visual questions, having seen it for the first time, just here we need some clearer definition here how this works, how that works, which sounds like rather than going through those here, maybe we all just feed those to you.
That'd be fine, yeah.
This is kind of a first draft, as you said, I appreciate that. As I said, trying to just read it carefully, I, I just marked it up. There was a lot of flow about this, about that. A more general thought though was that, uh, unlike the boundary which we pulled out of our, our zoning resolution, that, that was a real discreet piece. This was just quite so discreet, so I think we need to coordinate this a little bit with the next item on the agenda. If we take StanTech's recommendations, for example, it reads to me that all development has to be setbacks. And that the definition development includes septics. So this doesn't quite jive with that. Looks to be like this reads that, that septics really are completely their own thing, so there might be some adjustment in the language elsewhere in the zoning resolution. You've amended the existing zoning reg- regulation, but we're poised to change that various ways. If we took all StanTech's recommendations. So you could, just got two things going on here and they do overlap a little bit more than perhaps this reflects. That follow me?
Yeah, I mean, we, we, one of the other things, the, the next piece would be all of other, all the StanTech recommendations that don't have to deal with septic systems. We would work on those.
Right, but those two, they, they mesh a little bit more. They're, they're quite as discreet as say the boundaries, for example, when we create this local features requiring setback include bang, bang, bang. And then you preserve the language. Location setback constraints may be established as determined by the results of the set of this, these various studies. Now, if we took StanTech's recommendations, that paragraph into which you're, which you're adjusting wouldn't look like this. And it talks about, right now, we have the septic tanks have to obey the setbacks for vulnerable features.
Correct.
In the proposal from StanTech, as I read it, the answer is yes. Because they're a, a, a development, they trip the trigger for anything that interrupts the ground surface as the potential to happen. Or that difference. Okay, so under the proposal here, would septic still have to obey a, or a setback?
So in, under F, it says all newer replacement septic systems shall be setback at least one hundred feet from a vulnerable feature identifying the property. Um, the one difference is, is there's standards to lessen that setback if they're met.
Okay, so maybe there's the, the difference that I'm kind of looking at is what, what are the criteria for addressing those? And in the current regs, I think there's language that says, if the wastewater engineer thinks you've got a good plan, then they'll relieve, give you relief on setbacks.
So.
I don't think the cur- the suggested cap is quite so generous. I read it correct.
The suggested, well, maybe not in the, like in the cap itself?
Yeah, if we, if we were to change it as it's been recommended to us. I don't know that it has as much flexibility as, as what you're keying into here.
Okay, I, I'd have to go back.
Go back. Okay, I was. Go back, okay, I was trying to get all those documents at the same time. But the, the big difference between the suggested language and existing language is that the suggestion was, StanTech recommends that a minimum 100-foot setback from all the following features be required for all new development or improvements to existing development. And they don't, they don't provide that unless you don't like it, make us an offer, improve such and such.
So what they've suggested?
Yes, wow, so that's, I guess, that's what I'm saying, not in a articulate way, is that you need to address what the other parts of the cap might look like.
I mean, I, you know, I understand that the, there was a lot done by, by StanTech for the cap, but just because it was recommended by a consultant as many can, sure they should. There, there has to be a relief valve of some sort. That's why you have variances, the rise, you're, and to the risk of actually affecting the takings, in which case the county does not have one or two compensate people for fair market value and just due process violations as well. You know, something is just truly an impossible concept, so.
Yeah, and I'm sure I'm promoting a concept here, this is just coordination that's okay, are there other changes that would be, have to be made to the suggested cap? Suggested regulations to fully extract septic tanks, maybe that's better with the septic systems. Because if we made the corrections that are here, still had in the to-be amended zoning, everybody has to have setback, that they would be kind of at the cross purposes of each other.
I think.
Please.
Trying to say what I was confused about. And that is, do we have the septic regulation for everywhere else in the county that is not over the overlay? The aquifer overlay? Or is this document for the whole country?
Yeah.
So, so I think that's, yeah, worth.
So, yeah, I mean, as, as a bit of, I mean, background, you can access from Albany County website, if you go to the planning department page and then go to their regulations and zoning map, it does have the full wastewater regulations, which this would be going into the wastewater regulations. It would just be saying anything within the boundary of, you know, the APoz. These requirements also apply to the permitting of your septic system.
The question is, are you doing wastewater facilities separate from the zoning? Just for the aquifer overlay or the entire county? Meaning, do we have two documents at the same time? One referring just to the area over the aquifer and one for the rest of the county? Or is it, do we have a new item that is just wastewater facilities?
So, so what we're doing is, we're taking the aqua protection stuff, standards, and we're creating a new section in the wastewater standards just for those properties within the aqua protection overlays. So that's what we're doing, we're taking it from the zoning and putting it in there. And it is just a new section just for wastewater systems in it, is that?
But if you live by Centennial and you're not over the aquifer, you are not going to go to the wastewater facility link to find out what you need to do. You're going to go to a completely different document.
No, you'll go to the same document. They will be in the same place now. Currently, they're separated, but we're putting them all together.
Gotcha, that was what I was confused.
Okay, another place where I looked at StanTech, with an understanding that we don't have to go StanTech, and we certainly didn't follow them as, through the letter in terms of the boundary. But, but I would like us to sweep through this as though we had adopted all the other standard recommendations and see if that fits.
Yeah.
Which, like this idea of, of what is a development, what is a setback? They had suggested this only would apply to smaller than 35 acres. Now, which you, which this suggestion doesn't. So, again, I don't mean to be slavish to, to StanTech, but we paid them a lot of money, as we were discussing earlier, let's see what they had to say and define or accept with our eyes open.
Right, um, so Lisa Erickson, Assistant Planner Environmental in our office, she reviewed this, and that was one of her comments, was that why are we not doing this for 35 acres? So the statutes don't, or not the statutes, but the wastewater regulations, where it talks about installing wastewater systems in, you know, waters or groundwater that supplies a public water facility or whatever, it, it doesn't differentiate between a five-acre parcel and a 35-acre parcel. It just says if you're in this area, then you're, you should be providing additional treatment. So to get around that, she would just say, her thought was, and I, I thought it was fine, I agree with that, that we should just do it for, for everything, whether it's 35 or more, or whatever, or five acres. Does that not make sense?
Well, I guess, I mean, that's a decision, but I don't understand the whole ideas that we're trying to, to limit the septic loading, and if you're on 100-acre plot, your ability to impact groundwater negatively is vastly less than if you're on a two-acre plot. So why, why not have this, that aspect rolled into our regulation here?
I mean, I guess, if you feel like it's legal to do that, then we would do that.
I defer as a counsel here. I mean, the whole point of the overlay was we've
I don't have any problems with that. Yeah, I think, I think that the challenge with this is, you know, previously it was in zoning. So there, even from what StanTech saw, there's kind of like bleed over of zoning concepts. This specific of a regulation for septic systems only comes from our delegation. Through your zoning authority, you cannot say, you know, all, all things within this, like the interior configuration shall be this way, installed in this manner. You have to have, you know, HE dishwasher. That is, that's getting into code, we don't have that code authority for individual structures. So, yeah, this is really just coming from that, that delegation agreement, our authority to, to regulate and permit septic systems in this capacity. You can possibly get to some septic system thanks to your zoning, but not to this level with specificity. So, you know, I think that perhaps then, because this is all about, you know, kind of the, to a certain extent, you do need to kind of follow the standards laid out by DEQ. So maybe instead of doing it as a function of zoning, you do it as a function of, you know, measure for the trigger for that, that advanced, advanced treatment, where it's still just being measured at the boundary line. And you have to have something, so obviously, if you have something that's on March acreage, it's not going to trip that, that trigger, but I would, I recommend staying more in line with kind of the standards of small wastewater permitting, rather than carrying over zoning concepts into this document.
Because density, from a scientific point of view, the reason that we want enhanced is because of nitrate loading. You're telling me that it's inappropriate in the, not in zoning, but in the wastewater regs to say, here's what you do if it's this dense, here's what you do if it's that dense, that's getting outside of the delegation agreement? What, I mean, why not just have this whole thing that you've proposed for us to say, if you're in the APoz and you're smaller than 35 acres, here's all it?
Um, so, we need an updated delegation agreement with DEQ. Part of that is going to be a review of our small wastewater regulations. I don't mean to, to speak on David's behalf, but I believe the idea was that we address these. Address all this before taking it forth to DEQ for that updated delegation agreement. So I, my advisement was just as practical measure to put this into more of a form and kind of conceptually that, that DEQ is going to be more familiar with. So maybe not just doing it as like of our core zoning function, you can address that, that dwelling density in different ways, such as that point of measurement.
Okay, you lost me on point of measurement, there's nothing in this document about point of measurement, just a
I thought there was.
Like, like a point of reliance or something?
Yeah, um, no, that was the ATUs of the discharge point. So, but yeah, I mean, because the way this reads now, I mean, if you're a magazin, you have to have the ATU.
But you're telling me I can't have this say, if you're the APoz and you're less than 35 acres?
I'm not saying, no, I'm not saying that you can't, I'm advising you on my recommendation.
That's because it's not standard, or it's too weird for DEQ, I guess I'm not understanding the logic here. Why not make that just one more criteria for this wastewater reg?
Because there's, I mean, it's just their, their entire standards are based on functions over distance, so if you try to put that into more, or at least that's my understanding, chapter 25, how they take all those measurements and also chapter 23, to set, maybe not look at this as strictly a, this zoning function.
And if I put the 35 acres into this wastewater reg, it would start to look like zoning?
Yeah. Because their, their current standard, which, you know, I know that I was causing some consternation, is that it's just if you are in a recharge area of a public water supply, you have to have that four-lock right, advanced treatment, whatever.
That's you're keying off that footnote of table four or something in chapter 25. All right, I think, I mean, I think it's a concept worth preserving for the same reasons that, that it was there in the first place, because it's common sense that what you do is less critical than bigger your piece is.
Well, and it's 35, the magic, magic number for like preserving, you know, adequate dilution.
They're all the magic numbers, but no, I, that's a fair, a fair challenge, me 35 comes from our zoning. That's where I'm pulling that up.
So that's, I mean, I just, yeah, this is, that's why I'm saying that this is, I mean, try to make this not so much a function of zoning. But this is like, this is a different type of recognition. And it, I, it really does have to be.
It seems to me like we're already mixing in zoning, but just by saying this only applies to the APoz.
To, to an extent, yes, but also how we get that APoz boundary is through, you know, aquifer delineation, which is also then more in that, that DEQ under the Federal Safe Drinking Water Act sort of standards.
That's important to be interested in.
I mean, I, I see, absolutely, but I, you know, the, the core just delineation efforts, that's, that's much more than that sort of EPA DEQ wheelhouse already, which then we carried over to zoning. So maybe just, just keep it like a little more linear sort of.
Okay, so you're okay with that?
Yes, that, that, I'm, because, you know, you could also just say cap, and it would be the same function.
Because we need that.
So if there, if there were a, a, and it kind of is a, a scientific body that said the number's 86, then we could put it into our, well, where would we, where would we put that? Would we put it over in zoning, or would we put it here in wastewater?
For septic systems, I would put it right here.
Put it in wastewater regs, so your discomfort is that if we just pulled the 35 from our say the nitrate loading study, that, that failed to pass muster in the wastewater regs?
Well, but then, I mean, that again was based on existing zoning schemes. Because that's, they, they, when they did the nitrate loading study, they did by zoning densities, not by, you know, what's, what's the magic? Kind of cut off. So, I mean, and to an extent, you know, I, I think I'm just trying to advise you that this will need to be reviewed by DEQ as far as the updated delegation, which
My guess is DEQ would be delighted to have hit, have some limitations in it, that it wasn't a septic out there in the middle of 200-acre plot. They would say, yeah, cut up some slack.
Possibly, I mean, they're current regs now.
Okay, I mean, the concept is scientifically legitimate, I don't have any question about that, it's just, where's the right home for it? So your recommendation is just, there isn't maybe this is, let's think about it.
My recommendation is to sort of think critically about StanTech recommendations and understand that this is a different function than zoning. In the sense that and that this will be reviewed in a different process than what we used to. And to keep it in mind, that target audience here is essentially DEQ.
Okay, yeah, I think that becomes somewhat political as much as scientific, but I don't think it's unreasonable to suggest that DEQ would be more amenable, less severe this regulation was. And, and, and putting in something like 35 acres or 30 or whatever the number is, would make this a less severe regulation. Which then would lead me to the conclusion that they would be receptive to it.
Yeah, I mean, you're more familiar with DEQ than I am, so.
Okay, well, that's, that'd be, that'd be my recommendation, we could check, catch that in another iteration would be that we included an acreage value. The thing I like, we can hear about it, that's what you're suggesting, this whole thing needs to be reviewed by DEQ, or should be?
Saying that it will.
Say again?
I'm saying that it will.
The delegation agreement says we can regulate septic systems in a manner less strict than that.
No stringent than their, their, their promulgated regulations.
Yes, to meet that standard, so then are we, they have to approve this?
I think we have to give it to them, I think we have any changes, I think we have to provide, but I'm not sure there's any in the delegation. I have to go back and look for sure, but I believe we at least have to give it to them.
So would it be okay to put in like an appeal process, like you did for the local features? For large acreages?
I think that's, okay, then I guess there is that, for the setbacks, is that there?
Yeah, setbacks. But it's very specific, setbacks.
Yes.
It could also be for the lot size or other carryables that have work. And it could be done on it.
Yeah, I, I think there's, there's good sense in letting people know where they stand and saying, you know, if you're 15 acres, do this, if you're 20, do that, rather than make us an offer.
Would that take the zoning thing out of it?
So you don't
Just not, I'm concerned.
Because you could make a scientific case that it's not essential on a 200-acre plot, like you said.
Right.
It wouldn't be about zoning so much as it would be about a scientific case.
Which is why I'd like to see it here with the local grab stuff. All right, what, what's the discussion going on here?
Sorry. Sorry.
Again, this is, this is the first draft, so these are all just ideas to float around, but, uh, seem to mean that it's relevant to know where we stand with respect to DEQ and do we need their explicit approval? Or are we sending them a courtesy copy and if they don't like it, they can scream or?
We'll figure that out.
Okay.
That's what we've been discussing.
Please, please do. I think that's relevant. What, what I remember hearing, and I can't claim to have great insight, this was, uh, head of water quality, Jennifer Sigmundt was addressing the joint meeting of county commissioners, city councils. If you guys want to be more strict than us, you can go for it. Now she's the administrator, not the lawyers. And the, the sense of it would be, uh, yeah, step as far as, as you think is appropriate to your county, as long as you are no less strict than there. In that vein, what happened to the four log removal of nitrate pathogens?
We, I don't know where the ATU standard come from. Uh, it's from the cap. I think nobody knew what that was, so figured it out.
That's in the DEQ rig?
Yes.
It's the log removal part.
They don't know what it is either, do they?
I, I pick all that. I, I've offered that opinion at various forums, that that's very vague and nobody's really clear what it is or how you improve it or.
That's something that I'll, I'll reach out to DEQ and see what they say about it. So I don't really know what it is. I think the standards that we provide for ATU are above what DEQ would require anyways. I mean, most, most advanced treatment use are just the sixty percent nitrate removal, or fifty percent nitrate removal requiring sixty percent. Um, but I, but I can reach out about that other thing that we don't know what it is.
Yeah, once, once you get my comments, maybe you can refine some of those. Cause those are a lot of what I've got is what you need to, if you're gonna have standards, you gotta say where you're measuring them precisely. Out of tank, out of field, bottom of the field. Uh, the sixty percent relative to what? I mean, just mathematically, this thing needs to be tighter if it's going to be enforceable of total nitrogen. But sixty percent from where, from where it came out of the toilet or out of, into the tank or out of the tank or into the leach field. You gotta have a reference point if you're gonna say.
I mean, it has to be done. I know by the, by where it comes out of the tank before it goes into the leach field. That's the standard, but I don't know what, where it comes from.
Okay, again, these are just, you got a basic, but if we're gonna run the algebra, which is why we heard StanTech and they did it. This is incorporated, not the percent stuff, but the, just give me a number. Twenty-five milligrams or less as it leaves the septic tank before it hits the field, I think is what this says. And that's a coherent standard. Okay, uh, so I'm, I'm not happy with that. Then I'd also just bring to your attention that, uh, our missing commissioner, Mor Hanning, is employed by Tri-Hydro and this very evening is presenting a similar set of standards to the people of Teton County. I don't know if you guys have plugged into those, but, uh, it would be worth having a look at the plus. They haven't promulgated it yet.
The ATU standards or?
What's that?
ATU standard, like advanced treatment.
Yes, yeah, yeah. Well, they've, they've defined both advanced and additional slightly different ways.
Oh, really?
Yeah, so, but they've, they've.
We don't want to get that complicated.
They hired a consultant to really tear this thing apart, try to put it back together again. And I think they even included the pathogen removal. So, uh, that's just newly exposed to the public. I think tonight was its debut, but that, uh, I dropped Lisa a note suggesting she might just look at that for some additional reference.
Sure.
So just, just bring that to your attention. But otherwise, I think this is exactly what we talked about, dude. Sounds real good. Well, that review thing, I think catches my concern in terms of, was something that you've brought up before of does, does your shop have the horsepower to review requests for variances to double our quality impacts? I mean, Barney always just walked away from that.
Yeah. But I don't know what variances like.
Well, like if someone said, I, I, here is why I think my setback should be.
Oh, right, right, right. Yeah. I mean, we're, we're, I mean, with what we have, it's, we're telling, an engineer has to tell us these things, right? And then we're gonna take it kind of at face value, right? So.
Yeah.
I mean, the, the burden's on them to do it. Obviously, we all want to do stuff to protect the water.
Well, the problem we've had in all along is, is a misconception of septic systems as water purification. And they're not. They're water disposal facilities. And the primary objective of septic system is to take the wastewater out of the house, make it go into the ground and stay there. And a septic system is considered to have failed, not when it, uh, ceases to protect groundwater. It's when it backs up to the surface or into the bathtub. So, uh, engineers, the most competent engineer in the world will look at per grades, leach field sizes, baffles and tanks, and make sure that it performs its function, which is to take that wastewater, go away and stay away. And, and typically there's no concern, much less any training or understanding of the phase of those contaminants once they leave the leach field. So that's why the concern is, is raised. I think in some of our previous language, it has been offered appropriately qualified experts, so. Previous wastewater engineer was an aerospace engineer, for example. Barney was, he really understood septic tanks, but you could be a PE and not know squat about the question in front of you. So that would be my concern is just that we bring enough expertise to bear on this, that we could get a legitimate review in-house. And maybe that's, maybe that's requiring a few reviews. Teton County, I think they're looking staffing up to bring that kind of expertise in-house. But it is a different expertise than proper functioning septic system. Um, all right, that's all I had. Just feed comments back to these guys. Are there specific things that you saw in those rigs that concerned you or anybody else? I just wanted to, Matt, was thirty-five, the number thirty-five a triggering number? Just because that number does come up to all then, the zoning resolution? Being a different number, be less concerned or not? Well, if you're talking loading study, I could address that.
No, I, I, you know, I think that it was, it was just an example of this is a different, different sandbox.
Okay. The development density in the APOC is now thirty-five. And that came from this nitrate loading study. It looked at two, five, ten, thirty-five. So that's a degree that that, that you should have done more what you're talking about, find the number rather than of these two. Because it really isn't a zoning. You have to fit it on those boxes that does that. All right, any other thoughts on this? That I've already made the segue into the next piece is what else, all the other pieces of like to make sure that we're all coordinated. What's the status of the, the broader update that's been recommended by standard?
I came up with this beautiful work of regulations and then I sent it to somebody to look at and they keep back all my stuff. So I gotta get together with, with this, this guy who will name, read me names or whatever. We're gonna, we're gonna go through it. So, yeah, I, I, we've, we've got a, we've got a draft. Matt's got some comments and things and, and we just need to sit down and go through it also.
So if StanTech did provide something back in version three or something back way, way back, the, that's the kind of thing you're polishing up. We're gonna.
Yeah. Yeah, redlined of what we have.
Yep. Yep. Did anybody have any specific thoughts on that? That topic is just, uh, coming soon to a theater near you. Okay. Um, then we're moving on to the end of our agenda, looks to be like. Uh, next regular meeting, January ten, uh, comfortable with that? Okay. The one commissioner comment I'd throw in is I listened to the oral arguments before the judge on the lawsuits, uh, related to our protection regulations that we recommended to the county and they adopted. Thought he did a splendid job. Um, it was quite a contrast, the two sides. Jennifer Curran, Mr. Harrison appeared on behalf of the county, two lawyers on behalf of the plaintiffs. The judge seemed engaged. He was quite patient with allowing a lot more talk than she needed to. But anyway, I, I thought our side did well and committed Mr. Harrison's protection to our, our businesses.
So did you have to see your email this afternoon?
I, I did. I didn't know whether you wanted to bring that up, but go for it.
Yeah, I was glad we'd been filing. Uh, now, judge must be issued a ruling. Um, the petitions were dismissed by the district court on the grounds of a specific case of Sherwin Planning Association. Um, wherein uh, petitioners cannot use the Administrative Procedure Act, um, to challenge, uh, amendments to a zoning resolution by themselves. Um, just the amendments with like no other accompanying action, um, because those are essentially legislative decisions. So. Uh, I think it's not the end of the story.
That's appealed. And then of course we have a whole new set of regulations. All of those, it's never over. But I guess my shorthand for it, you correct me if I'm wrong, is that, that that the zoning isn't administering the law, it's making law. That's kind of the difference between administrative and legislative function.
Within an agency, actually, yeah.
Okay. Leave it shorthand, but anyway. Cleared for takeoff and then of course we'll have a whole series of new associated regulations in the court. So, any other thoughts? Anybody want to bring to the attention of more? Or maybe if we have a purpose, we can make a comment about the fact that your term is coming to an end. Oh, yeah, we all serve three-year terms. I'm the, uh, late, I don't know. Finds the next up, but I think only, they're just the one. Um, they've scheduled interviews, uh, next Tuesday morning for the regular meeting. So county commission will survey the applicants, make a choice. And you may have a new person sitting here come January and maybe not. Stay tuned. I have applied.
Good.
There was some arm twisting. Uh, okay, Mr. Gertz.
Just a minute. Um, so we got an award for our growth plan, so.
Wow.
Watering Planning Association. So I just wanted to show you guys that.
Just playing on tools.
I know, right?
Uh, and Sharon Pacino, who served on the city planning, was part of the gang of whatever we were, uh, got the divisional award for her services.
Yes, yeah. Planning Commissioner of the Year or something like that.
Yeah. So.
But yeah, um, it's kind of cool.
Those of you who know Sharon, she's quitting city planning because she's accepted a high-level appointment in the Department of Interior. She's off to bigger, better things, at least temporarily. Head of OSO. Does she, in university? Yeah, yeah, they're still, they stay here. Those are political appointments, so they can go south.
Yeah.
In a heartbeat in an election. Okay, so other thoughts before the, seeing that, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.